Board meeting. And we'd like to begin with our pledge, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today is Tuesday, October 5th. All board members are present. And at this time, we'd like to have our land acknowledgement.
Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Denina people, past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chanon.
Thank you, Ellie. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and of course, the board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, our school business partners and the entire community for your investment in our district by giving your time, your talents and your tax dollars. That, so we are now at the approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions?
Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any opposition to the approval? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as presented. And we have first, that takes us now to our community reports. We'll start with our military report. Okay. Colonel Yalomiter.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
We can, and we can see you. Welcome.
Fantastic. Thank you. Just three quick items for the, for the school board team this evening. First of all, I just want to give a quick update on what's going on with respect to COVID on the installation. So many of you may be tracking that on 17 September, Colonel Aguilar, the installation commander, went ahead and declared a health protection condition Bravo for the installation. And in conjunction with that, she also declared a public health emergency. And that was based on, on, on three primary factors. And the first one was, was just the high risk of, of local transmission that we were seeing in the community. The second one was certainly keeping an eye on the number of confirmed cases that we had here on Jay Bear and also in Anchorage as well. We were obviously keeping an eye on the degraded capacity of hospitals in the greater Anchorage area. And the other reason why she did this is because public health emergencies give installation commanders a little bit more flexibility and greater authority regarding public health measures. And she, she applied that on the 29th of September when she added an addendum, which is, which directed additional measures for military and civilian personnel that work on Jay Bear to include the fact that we now require mask wear indoors off the installation as well as on the installation. But just want to clarify, we have some questions from our, from Anchorage School District partners that for those individuals that are affiliated with ASD that work on or support one of the four schools we have on base, those staff members will continue to follow ASD municipal, state and federal guidelines with respect to mitigation and safety. So that, that kind of gives a quick summary of how things are going on the installation for COVID. The second thing I wanted to spotlight is we had the pleasure of hosting both Dr. Bishop and Mr. Tom Roth here on base yesterday. For many of them, they may have seen the news, we had our snow and ice vehicle parade to kind of kick off the winter season. And we were happy to have them come out and take part in that and get an up close look at that fleet. Secondly, she, they had a chance to meet with some of our squadron command teams here to kind of talk about the relationship between those families that certainly have kids that attend the schools in the area and some of their concerns. And then finally, we gave Dr. Bishop and Mr. Roth the chance to go visit one of our two before and after school care facilities, which really partnered very, very heavily with the school district last year when we were doing the virtual learning. The last item I have is one of the big things we're focused on right now is recruitment and licensing for our military family life consultants. These are actually counselors that live and work out in the schools, particularly the ones in the community where a lot of our kids attend. So we've been working very closely with the school liaisons, officers here at Jay Bear and also up at Iles and Fairbanks. And they've been working with our regional headquarters in Hawaii and as well as the Air Force headquarters in Washington DC. We started coordinating with the Alaska Department of Commerce and one of our goals is to open up recruitment to a wider pool of candidates to fill some of these critical positions out in our schools. So beyond those three items, that was really all I wanted to kind of bring up to speed to the team this evening. And I'll pause there for any questions from the, from the, from the committee.
Thank you, Colonel. Are there any questions for the Colonel? I don't see any, but thank you very much, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am.
And next we have student advisory board report.
So SAB, your student advisory board, held their first meeting on September 14th, 2021. And we will be holding our second meeting, October 12th, 2021 at 11:15 AM in this very room. Besides that, I have no other current information to report.
Okay. And when is your next meeting? Do you know?
10:12.
Okay, 10:12. Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for, for Ellie? All right. Thank you for being here, Ellie. That brings us to item C, which is our goal monitoring. Just to re, just a reminder that tonight, the first meeting of the month, we will get a report. And then we will have that report, be able to review it, gather our questions and discuss it, the how, what, the when, the why at our next meeting. But Dr. Bishop, did you have some comments?
Thank you, Madam President. We can put up the report and a copy of this is at each of your seats. It will also be published there on the agenda. This is just following up the written documentation that we'll have a discussion on at our next meeting. And I just wanted to point out just technically what the information shares and how it might be different than the reading. And again, the, the work is just introduction of these things at this semester for the fall. So as you can see, the math proficiency goal is 40%. And I want to point out that it is for students in grades three through nine. Different than the reading goal was third grade peaks is what we focused on, given that third grade benchmark. However, the math proficiency is collectively grades, grades three through nine, taking a look at the PEAKS assessment, which it's going to be called AK Star, the new assessment. And we'll have more information on that. They are actually presently, as a side note, requesting technical assistance. So we are going to advertise it to our teachers who would like to be a part of setting those markers for the standards. And so we'll get that advertised. They just put out the request today to start the process. So we are looking to increase students on the Summit of State Assessment who are proficient or meet that proficiency benchmark for the standards in each of those grade levels to increase from 40% to 55. And I'll show you in a bit that we did slip below 40% during the time of the last 18 months. But this goal, we're starting a little bit behind the 40%, but we did leave the approved goal that the board had. We're going to look at also what are the small parts to get there? And that's the interim goal. What are the small pieces that we're looking at that's going to inform if we meet that? And so we're utilizing MAPGROWTH and the, the test is called MAPGROWTH. And we're going to look at the percentage of grades three through nine at or above the benchmarks on those interim adaptive assessments. And presently, it's 48.4 and we look to at least move to 50% in the spring of this year. So as you see, the goal is a longer period of time. The interim is shorter and can be adjusted. The data on this, it is a busy sheet, but it provides you different pieces of information. Again, the goal is in the top blue quadrant, quadrant on the left. The math proficiency over time is on the right. And this is where I shared the gap year, you'll see that there wasn't a spring assessment in 1920. And as you can see, we have moved through a time where we had increased from the first year of taking a look at it. That again was our lovely, during this time, we had an earthquake and displaced some folks and then also a pandemic. So lots have been going on in schools in addition to everything else that goes on. But usually the trajectory to get to 55, as we look at MAPGROWTH, you'll see that we really have a target that we want all kids to meet that. We want, you know, the majority of our kids understanding mathematical concept on their grade level. But again, the goal for the five years is 55. My evaluation of performance or where I think we are right now, we are below target. The grade levels and the, the overtime where we are, what you see in the line graph is actually in chart form here. These are the, if you notice, they're very similar, the 38.8, you'll see that up in the graph. So we are presently at 2021 at that 36.8, which was a drop in mathematics. We'll also show you, which I want, and hopefully your questions can go, you know, really take a look at this. The N or the number of students tested is also significantly changed. But there's the color legend at the bottom to let you know where are we near target? What, what would it look like on target and above target? And so as we move forward, you're going to take a look at, you know, the different demographics and student groups where they are utilizing the same chart, color chart, as well as how many schools are on target? How many are below target, near target, et cetera? So to look at this, again, there's a gap year in the middle for which PEAKS was not assessed. Students were not assessed in this summative assessment that is the state assessment. This is a requirement assessment for Alaska to receive state federal funding. It is part of the Every Child Succeeds Act. And so this is a, a must do assessment. Again, the name is changing to AK Star, but what you have before you are the data thus far. On the left-hand side, you'll look at all of our student groups that are federally reported as well as the student groups that are federally reported. You can see the color coding really demonstrates at a quick glance the groups, student groups, students that fall into these groups. And just so you know, a student can fall into one, more than one group. I can be Asian and non-special education and economically disadvantaged. So the students can belong to one or more of these groups and they are self-reported. So if you take a look at the ends, really queue into that, that's a big thing, all grades three through nine. In 1819, you can take a look at that over 26,000 students were assessed in Anchorage School District. We had 24,000 last spring, but enrolled, but only, or rather 23,000 were assessed out of the 26 enrolled. And look at the significant drop, 24,000 in last year, we had nearly 16,000 take the assessment. We did have a lot of our parents opt out because I mean, the, the year was kind of a crazy year. Learning from home, learning in school, learning online. Not that it's devalued, but when it isn't a choice and the inputs aren't all the same, it's difficult to take a look. So you can see the percentages went down still a large percent, but it's understanding who was assessed and who wasn't. The number of schools on the bottom for each of those times, that below target, near target and on target. So we did lose some ground on the on-target and below-target schools, as you can see. And again, the middle one, near target, when you look at that, what we really try to focus on is eliminate the below-target and increase the on-target because the near-target, you don't know whether the schools went up to get into that near-target or down. So that's not really, you don't really want to, that one's just a difficult, that's a slippery one. So again, our goals are always to, when we see children as well, we, we want them to decrease the below-target students, increase the on-target and above students. So here is the interim assessment of MAPGROWTH. Again, MAPGROWTH is the name of the assessment. It is also, as a reminder, the assessment corporation that is going to do our new statewide testing. And I know Member Holloman was advocating for that for years and years and years. And so somehow we, we want to look to, as these two assessments integrate, having kids in front of assessments, saving time. So the goal is percentage of grades three through nine, you know, at or above the math benchmark in an interim adaptive assessment, moving from 48.4 to 50%. We do feel that on the interim, we are on target. The numbers are there. Again, we took a significant drop. When we looked at these assessments, and well, we can talk about it more when we get into it, there really were a picture of who took the test and who didn't. And so that was significant. For MAPGROWTH, we have the very same breakout for the board to take a look at about student groups. Again, we always want to look at our school district collectively, but also individually as students and collectively as student groups, because we just don't want to miss anyone. It's our goal that, back to the original work, that no child is left behind. Or presently, Every Student Succeeds Act. Those are the, the federal regulations that come down to all states. So the next steps in just understanding this, of course, increasing proficiency in mathematics requires effective instruction from educators trained to support students, consisting of implementation integrity of instruction every day. The next two slides are really going to talk about the ongoing and work, consistent work to ensure students receive effective instruction. And the first one highlights the broad look at the ASD goals and the instructional focus. And the second slide will look at the instructional elements that really look at strategies and the actions so that the board and everyone knows what the what is about what's being done. It isn't an exhaustive list. It is, well, you have to keep the main thing, the main thing. This is the least of the things that we want to do in our schools to increase the student outcomes, the student learning behaviors. The chart is about complete, in progress, next steps, upcoming. So if you take a look at the overall structure, this looks very similar to reading. It talks about the K8 goal, hey, what are you really trying to do? We talk about increasing opportunity to complete Algebra I. Algebra I, Algebra II are gatekeeper courses for students. And we just basically want to increase mathematical proficiency through opportunities to respond and engagement in mathematical discourse. So opportunities respond are really engaging, that students become active and engaging in their learning with their teachers. And that really focus on grade level standards, instruction in a welcome and fun learning environment for kids, supportive of teachers and students. The instructional focus, we are using the iReady Classroom Mathematics, which is our new program. We're also going to support through a multi-tiered system of supports. And the mathematics curriculum that we did choose has an electronic component called iReady. And it really allows independent work, work at home, work at school to really focus on the advancing students or working on the, the gap skills that they missed. Also, a big work in the instructional focus is that we're utilizing inclusive practices as components of instructional plans for special education students. Rather than tracking, we're engaging in high-quality access to curriculum and high-quality instruction by partnering teachers together for the betterment of kids. So of course, the approach is learning, learning, learning all we can together. Teachers, staff, school leaders implement grade level standards, understand what they are, what do the kids, what are they supposed to know and be able to do? Really having a sight on that, working together instructionally in improvement cycles to get that done, taking a look at how students do and then going back to the beginning and saying, let's work again. These are the supports we need. Let's see how our kids do. It is a continuous improvement cycle that you see in many different areas, whether we're coaching kids and businesses and schools. We have to do the work the best we can and then look at the work we've done, discuss it and then make sure that we put the best in front of our, our students again. So with that, here's where we are. The first semester with a pandemic and all that's going on is literally just an introduction to all these things. The, the plate is full. We want schools to start thinking about their school, their classroom in relation to these strategies and action steps. So we have had teams together to define the strategies, but creating structures and the clarity of roles, identifying and addressing the gaps and developing a plan for the following year. That's all part of that process of getting better. But right now, it is literally at the start. And other than introduction, understanding where I am, understanding what these are, that's the capacity building we're doing this semester. So with that, that's how we take a look at it and we can share. But again, the, the difference and that you can picture is that the three through nine is a collective of all third through ninth graders. So it's a large body data set with lots of different indicators that would go in there. That's very different than the primary skills of a curriculum-based measure. So when you look at reading and you saw what we did in K1, 2, the PEAKS and the MAPGROWTH are very different assessments that look at putting it all together. They're inclusive of all the skills and all the thinking of getting things done, not just separate individual skills as we define for reading. So with that, that is the monitoring and any kind of technical things, welcome, understanding it, questions throughout the next couple of weeks, whatever we can do to assist in the board's understanding of where our students are in their learning and where we would like them to go.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So board members, if you have any technical questions to help you understand the data in front of you, I can, we can answer those now. Otherwise, we look forward to seeing your questions for our next meeting, which is when we will have an opportunity to have a conversation about the data that's before you. Mr. Higgins, did I see your finger? Okay. I saw you. Turn your mic on, please. And what's your technical question? That's better.
When was the current curriculum adopted for the math? What, what timeframe was that?
2020, I think February of 2020, I think.
Okay. And, and I guess.
Our, we have our math folks in there. When was the latest? The math curriculum adopted? Maybe it was.
This is Jenny Knutson.
This is not difficult, but losing time. I'm sure our kids and families feel that the COVID year is, was right, happened in the middle of this process. It began prior to that.
It probably was 2019. I was, I know I was really new on the board when that happened.
And we're giving a shout out, like a game, to the people who ran that. Dr. Knutson couldn't be with us this evening.
But we can get that. It's been within the last, right before COVID, pre-COVID.
Okay, we'll get into a discussion of everything else. They're just technical. Thank you.
We'll get it for you. Thank you.
Jenny Knutson is on the line and we can, that was a great question, so we'll pull. She might have even have texted me, no? Dr. Knutson, are you able to answer that question? Did you hear that? There she is.
I am, I am. Thank you.
The question was, when was the most recent iReady math adopted? And can you share the grade levels for which it was adopted?
Yeah, and I don't have the board memo in front of me, so I can get you the exact date. But this was right when we went into COVID. So I believe it was around March of 20, let me think, 2019. Because last year was 2021, yeah. March of 2019, I believe it was, or 2020. So it was right when we started the pandemic. It is for grades three through eight is what we're implementing right now. And last year was a pilot year. And even online, we were able to pilot it with four schools. So this is the actual first year of full implementation.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any more. Board members, we look forward to your questions and your thoughts for, to really have a conversation on our math monitoring. So that moves us now to item D, which is my favorite part of our program. We do have a, a, a list of, I think, what do we call them? Guidelines for testimony that's available to you. But before we begin, I'd like to just say a few words and remind us. We do welcome everyone to our, to, to our boardroom. And this is the first opportunity of two that we will have this evening for public comment or public testimony. The board has set aside a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public testimony. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the second opportunity, which is at the end of our meeting. During board, during your testimony, we will not answer questions or engage in discussion. We want to hear from you. So this is your time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the 1800s. Those rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. So I'd like to just remind all of us of a few requirements under Robert's Rules. Do not attack a member or speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. We ask that you refrain from disturbing the meeting. And this really includes no cheering, applause or outbursts. Unless you are testifying, please be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the school board. And as we are conducting our business, there's no foul language or profanity allowed. There's no place in our meetings, in this boardroom, for any profanity or cussing. And I would like to note that given the recent public displays of disrespectful, hateful and anti-Semitic behaviors, we expect all of our remarks in, in our boardroom, in this boardroom, to be respectful so that everyone feels welcome. Please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Your mask must cover your mouth and your nose unless you have a waiver from a doctor. And at that, at that point, we will, at this point, we would have already known that. No waving of signs, flyers or posters. If you have handouts that you'd like to share with the board, you may hand them to Katie. Katie is right here sitting to my left. And so finally, as the president of the board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violations of these rules and others. Further, I will have removed from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner. So with that, we will go to our first. And I am really excited because as you all may remember or recall last, our last meeting, we voted to prioritize our student behavior, not behavior, but our student. See, there's a fraudian slip, always an educator. To prioritize our student testimony. And so tonight is our first opportunity to do that. And we have three students signed up to, to testify tonight. Is it Elohim Todd? Elohein? Elohim? Elohim Todd. Welcome, Elohim. She's nervous? All right. What about Akaya? Akia? Oh, that's okay. Akaya is nervous, okay. And where's the other twin? Not here? Okay. All right, that brings us to Kennedy. Kennedy Grady, welcome, Kennedy.
Hello.
Hi. You have three minutes. Can you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
I'm very glad that students were able to go first because we, that means we get a chance to speak more without knowing, getting nervous from like other people's speeches. I'm an honor student in East High, Betty Davis East High School. School for me has been okay. There's like a lot of more activities that I've done before versus other schools, which I'm happy about because some clubs I'm in, I haven't really even heard of before. So I'm really happy about that. And there's a lot more programs that also help me keep up grades and such, and that helps a lot since, since, uh, yeah, since I came from homeschooling, which was a lot more, um, still more easier, easier for me because I was able to go at my own pace for homeschooling. Though, of course, with in-person schooling, you have certain time limits and due dates for things like projects and homework. But other than that, I'm really glad I get to go to in-person school again to see my friends.
Yes, Ms., next, we have Roslyn Grady.
Yes, I am. Okay, so I'm Roslyn. I'm a mom of five and a proud member of Totem. Today's Totem Tuesday. I wear my green in respect to my cousin, Tanya Taylor, who has a foundation. She worked at Bartlett High. I am also the vice president of the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators. I thought I was coming in really confident about my speech today, but I think I just have a bunch of concerns and things that have been bothering me as a parent educator. So I clearly don't teach for the money. I have a second job, and it's been really hard going to school, just being really fatigued. Going into classrooms with my fourth graders who are in math, that's like double-digit addition and subtraction, and then not being able to do it. I think that we need to do something about the curriculum for these babies because they did miss that year with COVID. And I don't mean to get emotional, I'm just really tired, and it feels like we're being looked over as educators. We're also on the front line, and when we see things like emails of discussion with our unions and things like that, and it just doesn't feel like we're appreciated. I can't speak for everybody, but that's just how I feel. I want to be a teacher, I'm in school, and when I seen what was circulating on social media with the whole AEA thing, I got scared because it made me feel like I couldn't even pay my student loans off, which I pay to go to school. So with that being said, I, it's really hard going into a classroom. I have, there's a classroom in particular, there's 31 students. Fifteen of them are sped, some of them are ELL, but all 31 of them are behavioral. It's been a struggle, and I just really hope that you guys take into consideration what's going on in the schools on the east side because they want to learn, but we can't learn in that environment. And I think we need to step back a little bit with where we're at. The iReady is not a problem, but it is a problem for some of our students. And so I just really hope that even students that are above, like I know that we want to be up high for the 2023, but I hope they're just those students that are now in fifth grade and up are being looked at too, that don't know how to read and that are struggling to get to where they're at. And that we all pay attention to the teachers too because we're tired and fatigued, but we do this because we want to.
Thank you, Roslyn. And I don't see him in the queue, so we will try to swing back up to him. In person, we have Barb Clark. You have three minutes.
Hello. I'm Barb Clark. I'm an AEA board member, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf, on behalf of the AEA Board of Directors. At your last meeting, the AEA, the ASD board talked about test scores for an hour, and on the, on the previous meeting, for another hour. And now we hear that you might be considering purchase of an expensive data tracking system. In the course of your deliberations, not one educator has been asked, how's it going? What do you need from this board to meet our new goals? If we were, I bet that not one of us would respond, more data. There are things we do need and things we need to keep. As the ASD negotiating team shared with you that they propose to take away end-of-quarter grading days, leaving us with no transitional time to grade, organize, or plan for the next quarter. That they want to take away instructional planning time, crucial to performing tasks that prepare educators to teach and design lessons. That they expect all of our time before, during, and after school to be available for other duties, lunch, buses, playgrounds, hallways, time we need to plan, assess, meet with colleagues, and communicate with parents. In her recent letter to the community, Dr. Bishop acknowledged the unprecedented stress under which educators are working. She said, there is fatigue at all levels. That's true, and thank you. We hope that the district will take extraordinary measures to retain and suitably recompense, recompense the experienced, dedicated staff it has. Educators who love their work, understand their students, know their schools and their communities, and have seen this district through an earthquake and an ongoing pandemic with dedication, flexibility, creativity, and courage. ASD is negotiating with both Totem and AEA as if it's business as usual, as if there were no pandemic, no educator shortage, no crushing, crushing crisis of teacher morale. These tactics are failing miserably to inspire and support your staff. It is a terrible time to be offering a proposal that has no salary increases for three years and a minimal health benefit contribution. It's only the first week in October, and we are March tired. We're exhausted, and we feel disrespected. How can you help? How can you help work with our educators, work with educators to settle our contracts sooner rather than later? Support our nurses with nurses aides who can help provide rapid testing for staff as well as for students. Give your educators the time and flexibility we need to do the job you ask of us. This AEA board is solution-oriented, and you have an opportunity here tonight to start to turn things around.
Thank you, Barb. Next, telephonically, we have Michelle Martin. Michelle?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to just give a shout out and a thanks to the, to the teachers, to the administrators, to the staff, to the volunteers at our schools this year because I know that it's been a difficult, a difficult time both last year and this year. And I just, I thank all of you. I see the, the staff and the faculty at my son's school, and I just really honor and thank the work that you all are doing in such difficult times. And, and I see you creating really loving, caring environments as best you can in these tough times. I appreciate the, the last couple of folks who spoke, and yeah, please, please, listen, listen to those folks who are on the front lines with our kids every day. They need your support, please support them. One thing I would like to say as a parent today, I'm a parent of a, of an ASD school child, and I would like to say that to me, it really, really feels like we are creating an unsafe culture when we do not allow parents in the classroom. I understand that there are people who are terrified that, that more people in classrooms is going to, to exacerbate the, the spread of COVID. To me, it's a, that's, seems like the, having, allowing parents to enter their kids' classrooms, if you need me to be masked, I'll wear a mask. But yeah, it's, it's real weird for me. I've never in my life as a parent, other than when my child entered a surgery, surgery room, been barred from entering a space where somebody else was caring for my child. And again, I give such great thanks to the, the teachers who, including my son's teachers, who are doing such an amazing job of, of doing what they can in such difficult situations this year. But I do want access to the spaces where my child is. I don't, I don't feel safe on a district-wide level saying that, that parents can't access the spaces where their children are. So that's the number one thing I have. The other thing I want to mention that I also mentioned last time I testified is, I know tomorrow is school picture day, at least at my son's school, and in past years, he's come home with, holding up a sign with his name on his school picture, this is not safe. Please, please, please eradicate this practice. And I'm going to send my son and then let him know not to do that because I don't know what they're doing at school, but, but please eradicate that as a practice. It is not safe to put our children's names on their, on their photos and then send, send those photos home with the kids who love, you know, we love them, and we also know that they're likely, is likely to drop them sometimes along the way as they are to get them home safely. So those are...
Thank you, Michelle. Next, in person, we have Casey Burbig. Welcome, Casey. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Casey, Casey Burbig, and it's my first year teaching. This is my second career, my second degree. I, I, it's been a dream of mine for many years, but I'm not sure how much longer I can last. I unfortunately, due to no single factor but a culmination of many, I find myself disheartened to say the least, that I am unable to provide my students with proper access to the quality of education they deserve. Speaking from the perspective of my classroom at Northwood, I would like to highlight several areas of deficiency and desperate, that desperately needed to be addressed. I have 31 sixth-grade students. They are bigger than me. They fill the classroom. I cannot safely walk from one end to the other. Nearly all of my sixth graders are affected by trauma, homelessness, foster care, death of parents, not living with families. I have nine to 10 ELL kids and four kids who use resource services, four. I have many that have aggressor labels on their student records. In the first month of school, there have been desk flipped, a punch to the head of one student, one student pulling another student's pants down while lining up for band, a full-blown fight on the playground, chairs thrown, books thrown, water bottles thrown across the room, and more. There, a majority of my kids have proficiency levels equivalent to the third grade. I have 22 third grade to kindergarten level, two on-grade level, and then the rest are fourth to fifth grade level. The curriculum I'm required to teach is simply out of their reach. I cannot teach sixth-grade math to children who cannot multiply or divide. While I was helping one student learn, trying to find the area of a rectangle, of a triangle, I, we were multiplying by a half, which is dividing by two. I didn't know how else to explain it to her, and she was getting upset, and she said, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't understand. Why don't even know what divide means? This is a sixth grader, not in resource, not special ed. I have, I'm with them every day, okay? I have 31 kids. I know them. I talk to them every day. They're good people, just trying to get through each day. But as the curriculum is so out of their reach, the behaviors increase. They don't know what's going on. So as we navigate these tumultuous times, I cannot thank the school board enough for looking out for our kids. But this is not sustainable. This is not what I expected while joining ASD. And I acknowledge, you acknowledge the challenges, but I currently don't see the light at the end of the tunnel. As we teach so far above their learning levels, they get farther behind. They need help at their learning levels.
Thank you, Casey. In person, next, we have Cory Angst. Welcome, Cory. You have three minutes.
Thank you, President Bellamy, and thank you to the school board. I don't know about you, but it's educators like Casey that inspire me to keep coming to work every day and doing the job. She shared her story. I will share mine. I went to visit her class today and conducted a short read aloud, and then followed up with a language arts lesson. I wanted to feel her experience. She reached out. I shared that with you all earlier today. As the picture I sent you earlier indicated, the classroom is overcapacity, and there's very little room between students to support COVID mitigations, or more importantly, manage behavioral concerns, of which there are plenty. For those of you who don't know, I taught at Maldoun Elementary for 10 years. I'm very familiar with the population. Did everything from fifth grade to five years in kindergarten. Five years in kindergarten was one of my best experiences in the classroom. When a class, when a classroom is filled to such a capacity as this one, and there are so many behavioral concerns, classroom management is overly challenging and learning outcomes suffer. This would be a challenging class even for a veteran teacher. Just like at a school board meeting, classroom decorum can be lost just by one or two individuals, right? Let alone half a dozen that act out constantly. A funny anecdote that Casey shared with me in terms of the students challenged at grade level in their iReady are just switching their computers around. So that'd be like me asking President Bellamy, will you do my math for me because I can't do it? And then I'll hold on to your computer for a little while. It's hard to manage in a class that big every day, let alone what might be happening at There are teachers reaching out to me every day. They're reaching out to you, so I'll just share a couple. One teacher shared, we are overwhelmed with the demands and situations put on us. We are stressed, tired, and mentally exhausted and physically exhausted, and it's only the beginning of October. Another one wrote me today, I never thought I would be working in a career that gets no respect from their bosses. I would never tell anyone to become a teacher for ASD. In fact, I work another job because at that job, I get respect and we work as a team. These experiences make me cry. I, I love ASD. I've been here for 20... I've been here for 25 years. In the next, in the, in the last week, I've had the privilege of providing lessons to classes at Northwood, Willow Crest, and Susitna. I plan to be in three more schools by the next board meeting and I hope to continue to share some of my experiences and I hope to see you all out there as well. I'd be glad to go to any school with any of the school board members.
Thank you Cory. Okay, next in person, we have Susan Ritter. Welcome Susan, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Bishop, AEA and ASD leadership and members of our community. My name is Susan Ritter. I am a high school special education teacher at Service High School. I taught 10 years in elementary life skills and have just started my fifth year as a high school life skills teacher. My testimony tonight is about the challenges I face as a life skills teacher. I know I'm not alone and that other teachers feel as I do, but I am speaking on my, for myself. I teach intensive needs students. These students all require a modified curriculum. Each student learns differently. Each student has their own learning style. Over 10 years ago, ASD purchased a specific education program called Unique Learning Systems. It is the tool provided by ASD to teach life skills students. It is not enough. It does not support all students. It does not meet the needs of my students. So I modified the modified program. This takes time and money, my time, my money. This is a problem for me and for my bank account. I am telling you this because you should know that I am not alone in using my time and, and money to create more suitable curriculum for students. It's what we do as teachers. We see a need, we have to meet that need. There are other web based programs that are more suitable for students, for some students, but they are not being purchased by ASD. So let me return to other issues that need to be heard. As far as I am concerned, ASD should stop creating trainings that provide little pertinent value to teachers. This is not my, this is just my opinion. I've attended trainings that are just not suitable for my life skills program and I would prefer to be in the classroom getting ready for students. As I review the current bargaining proposal by ASD, all I see is time being taken away from teachers, time from planning, time from collaboration with colleagues, time from grading, time from preparing for IEPs, which you are aware of that I am now an IEP clerical because I prepare meetings for up to 10 people, maybe even 12 per student, so that I can have their IEP prepared and ready to go, these people. Stop taking away time for my job. I need time to prepare, to create, to figure out how to improve my lessons for my students. I, we, the teachers of Acare School District are exhausted and it is only the first quarter. And let me finish saying that I love my job. I'm good at it. I am passionate. But what I feel that we are not getting is we're not getting support, respect, listened to, consulted to, or consulted or considered as the experts. We should be partners with ASD.
Thank you Susan. Next in person, we have Bryce Purcella. Welcome Bryce, you have three minutes.
Can you restart my timer please?
Okay, you have three minutes.
Hello, it's been a while. Many of you know me. My name is Bryce Purcella. I'm an ASD teacher on a year long leave of absence. I taught science here for nine years. My students always do well on your standardized tests, my evaluations are always stellar, and I turned a school's struggling volleyball program into a competitive one. Currently, I'm trying to decide whether or not to return to ASD. I love the teaching, I love the kids, I even love the kids' parents. I love coaching, I love Eagle River, I love my subject matter and I love my colleagues. So why would it be hard for me to return? I'm not an AEA union member, but after seeing what the district put forward as initial contract proposals, why should I return? More work, less time to do it, and seemingly no understanding for the work that I do. Now to be fair, I get it. In the last round of negotiations, I was told by both the union and the district that this is all part of the game when it comes to negotiations. Well, here we are again. Both sides are busy playing games while educators go without a contract. The concept of good faith on both sides is a farce. My question to fellow educators, why are you putting up with this? No contract? You have no obligation to teach? Effectively, you're not employees, you're just paid volunteers. Organize yourselves and walk out tomorrow. I can think of no other profession where employees work for such long periods of time with no contract. However, this is just a small symptom of the larger problem existing in ASD. At the last board meeting, Mr. Ace had over 100 educators left last year. In that same meeting, district leadership addressed certain program failures and blamed it on the earthquake, COVID, and even worse, teachers. I think you've missed the mark. These problems existed well before the earthquake and COVID. A little over a year ago, an AEA poll asked members for the level of confidence held in our superintendent and the board. Those who had total confidence in the superintendent was about 5%, the board 12%. I could be wrong on those figures, but I, I'm fairly certain neither broke 15%. With the district so obsessed with making data driven decisions, there's your relevant data. In my teacher education and training, I was taught that you must first earn the trust and respect of students in order to teach them. Does this best practice extend to administration as well? How much longer will this body disrespect and ignore professional educators? Perhaps you sit there and say to yourselves, well, that's not true. And to be fair, maybe it's not. But it's also true that your employees do not perceive you as supportive. ASD will continue failing to reach its full potential when you act without the trust and confidence of your employees. Does this mean you must grant every desire of every teacher in the district? Of course not. But you must validate their points of view and demonstrate by actions and example that they have been heard, not just words and meetings and emails. I know none of you are malicious and are concerned with educating children, so please listen to your employees' problems and needs and engage with them in finding solutions. A token walkthrough of a building isn't sufficient for you to understand the demands and problems facing teachers, which your policies create. Nor is it enough to rely on information from building principals who no longer experience autonomy and decision making, but are sadly just asked to be policy enforcers for the ED Center. This is my, this is the district of my childhood. I support you and our educators. And I want to see a greater focus placed on working and.
Thank you Bryce. Okay, we'll go to the telephone. We have Dave Carter. Mr. Carter, star six to unmute.
Dan, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello. Anchorage made the national news today. Alaska's and Anchorage's seven day per person COVID case rate are the highest in the nation per Dr. Joe McLaughlin, our state epidemiologist. Our hospitals are on crisis care status because they are filled with unvaccinated COVID-19 patients. The Dr. Ann Zink, Alaska's chief medical officer, is reminding people that we have three vaccination options, all of which are safe and effective against COVID-19. Doctors, nurses, hospitals, and Alaskans are asking unvaccinated Alaskans who are eligible for the vaccines, and that is most, most people now, to just get vaccinated. We are tired of seeing unvaccinated COVID-19 patients who are very sick. Some young, healthy people die, leaving children without a parent. Some 20 healthcare facilities across Alaska are operating on crisis standards of care. Some people who would not have died have died because of the situation. So for our hospitals, doctors, nurses, economy, and community, as well as the schools, please get vaccinated. Thank you, a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp. Mr. Kemp, star six to unmute.
Hey.
You have three minutes, sir.
All right. I hope everybody's feeling all right this evening and, and good evening to everyone. So thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher in the ASD and parent of two ASD students. I'm also president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. And so I, I just wanted to say tonight that we, we have a racism problem in the ASD. More accurately, we, we've had a racism problem in the ASD for pretty much as long as the ASD has been in existence. So for anybody whose jaw has just hit the floor, pick your jaw back up, okay? Because it's not a big surprise. All right? So for those who don't believe or realize that, you know, you've either looked the other way, you know, and ignored it, or you've just been oblivious because your, your privileges kind of kept you insulated from the truth of the matter. Either way, we got a problem. If you haven't noticed, incidences of interpersonal racism, they've, they've been on the rise recently with really no signs of, and antisemitism, by the way, with no signs of slowing down. The reason these incidences are up is not because more people are being just miraculously transformed into racist and anti-Semi. It's because more people believe that it's okay to express their sentiments of hate and bigotry more openly. I guess they've gotten some examples of how to act from somewhere. I don't know. So we've seen racist microaggressions on the rise as well. You know, these are everyday slights, indignities, and put downs and insults and so forth. Just, you know, too many people of color have been reporting these incidences across the ASD. Just consider recent ones, right? Where kids and parents have at least been brave enough to come forward and report what, what happened to them, right? Incidences at Butler High, Golden View, Betty Davis East, the graduation regalia incident at West High, remember that? Chugiak High staff walking around with white supremacist t-shirts on with no reprimand. Earlier, Chugiak parents and staff trying to get Betty Davis East kid kicked out of basketball tournament because they chose to wear Black Lives Matter t-shirts. I mean, there's more that have been reported and even more that have not been reported, okay? You already got only 1% of all ASD teachers are black and only 1% are indigenous. So unless the district really wants to go for a 0%, you gotta do something about this rise in racism and.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next in person, we have Taylor Mitchell. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Taylor Mitchell with the Alaska Black Caucus and the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. First, racism is a reality that our BIPOC students face. Remember that just because you don't see something or hear something doesn't mean it's not happening. The ASD has been dealing with lawsuits as well as angry parents whose students have been victims of racism in this current school year. We desperately need the support of the superintendent. I welcome her to reach out to me. The groups that I'm in have been personally working with several families whose children have been victims of racism. Black students being called the N-word repeatedly in school and out of school, or being asked why they're so dark, for example. This is multiple students, all different incidents. The schools are handling these incidents, incidences poorly. ASD is not coming down hard enough on offenders, administrators calling victims' parents' jobs, trying to get them fired, administrators making excuses for the offenders. It's completely unacceptable and ASD must do more. Utilize the anti-racism policy that was passed. Next, I want to talk about educators of color. My mom is an educator of color for the ASD, so this means a lot to me. Educators, especially those of color, have been leaving the ASD because of poor workplace conditions. Our white allies who stand with those teachers of colors are targeted for doing so. Some have been leaving ASD due to hardships for being associated with the BIPOC, with BIPOC educators. The threat of retaliation is happening. People ask for the facts on racial disparities. Well, here they are. During the 2020-2021 school year, the ASD had the following demographics. White, 85% of teachers versus 40% of students. Non-white, 15% of teachers versus 60% of students. Black, 1% of teachers versus 5% of students. Indigenous, 1% of teachers versus 10% of students. Hispanic, 4% of teachers versus 12% students. Asian Pacific Islander, 4% of teachers versus 18% of students. Two or more races, 5% of teachers versus 15% of the student population. Each day that our 60% non-white student population is taught by an 85 plus percent white teacher population is a problem because all our students need to see the diversity represented in the ASD community itself. ASD must show that they have educators' best interests in mind to attract and retain educators, mostly educators of color. I believe the current ASD contract proposals are disrespectful and contrary to the goal of retaining educators. ASD wants to squeeze out more for less. And here's why I say that. Eliminating grading days in favor of additional in-service days, educators being available for duty every minute of the day, taking away planning time in favor of meetings, additional restrictions on the accumulation and use of personal leave, and 0% for no increase in salary for three years. It's ridiculous. All of the above will have a huge negative effect on educators and will completely derail retention goals, especially for educators of color. Educators deserve.
Thank you Taylor. Next in person, Caitlin Poindexter. Welcome Caitlin, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is, can you hear me? Name is Caitlin Poindexter and I am the mother of twin daughters that just started kindergarten this year. And my mom is a retired elementary school counselor and I grew up in DODs, Department of Defense Department schools, at a school in England, that RAF Wigan East. I was raised in a school. Teachers are my family, right? Like my mom lent me out to all the teachers, you know, set up their classes. I always say Caitlin can volunteer for that, right? Like I know what a school feels like. And the school's how they feel right now, it's not right. And I'm going in now as a parent, right? I was a student, was a kid of a teacher, and now I'm a parent. And so I feel the anxiety. I've gone into my daughter's kindergarten class and I just think this isn't what kindergarten is supposed to be. And I know there's a lot of things that are out of our control and I get that. So I'm not here to berate you, but I, I want to give some suggestions. And I don't know that I'm right, but I want to try something, right? So I think we need to spend more time outside with our kids. I think our kids need more time to see each other's facial expressions. I get we need to wear the masks, it's a safety thing, but we can spread out outside, right? So I'd like to see the children have more time outside. Maybe the TA can go out with some of the class, you know, like they can all go out and then the teacher can work with fewer students, especially kindergartners. They have a lot of life skills to learn, right? You know? I also think my daughters are at a monastery school, which sort of favors this, but they do buddies. And so the students, the kindergartners work with the sixth graders. It's adorable. That's my daughter's favorite time of day. They come home and say, I got to meet with my buddy today. I want more of that. I think these sixth graders can show these kindergartners what kindergarten can be, right? You know? And they could do their buddy time outside. Like again, no such thing as bad weather, only bad gear. Get, get our kids outside and socializing and I think that'll help all of the academic stuff, to be honest. And then dedicate the majority of the upcoming teacher parent conferences to brainstorming together. It's real. Like let's not make it the elephant in the room. We're all tired, right? I get it, we're all exhausted. We've had different levels of, you know, COVID in our lives and we're, we all wished it would have gone away by now, right? But it hasn't. So let's work with reality and have the parents and teachers work together. Because I want to support my children's teachers. I want to support the other staff in the school. But we can't, you know, I think everybody's just trying so hard to survive, you know? And then I think as many of the bureaucratic processes as you can simplify, do it. Because we've added a lot to our lives with COVID, right? We're all, we're in the mask, we're all doing all the things, all the paperwork.
Thank you Caitlin. Next telephonically, we have Gladys Dennis. I don't see her in the queue. We'll try to swing back. Next in person, we have Charles Hans Thompson. Welcome, you have three minutes. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Balmey. Um, my name is Hans Thompson. Uh, I graduated from West High School in 2003. That was the first year of the SRO program in ASD. Uh, I never interacted with the SROs and, um, I don't know anyone that did, uh, interact with the SROs. Um, that time after 9/11, this month is the 20th anniversary of the Patriot Act, um, was a time when there were administrative actions to provide security for unknown threats. And the SRO program was one of those programs. We have, um... Excuse me. Um, it was presented as a way to provide increased security for an unknown threat. The SRO officer's role in schools is now offered, advertises something else. It's advertised as both a patrol officer that can be in the school and a counselor to schools. Um, the cost of these officers to APD is around $130,000, $130,000 on average. That equivalence would be a PhD counselor. Um, I'm not suggesting that we change that to have PhD counselors in the schools, but that is a fungible amount of money that APD, ASD could use for other purposes. Now, the mayor is proposing that ASD chip in 75%, 75% of the funding for the SRO program, uh, but it's clear that he doesn't value the program with the priorities that APD has with a much looser budget. Um, it's time to end the relationship between APD and ASD through the SRO program. I ask that you don't ask the Assembly to change the budget to pay for the SROs. Don't provide COVID relief money for the SRO program. Um, and negotiate with the Assembly for the resources that will replace the role SROs are supposed to be playing because you have a good reason to. Um, I know you need to confer with each other and this is new news about the issue, but really what the mayor is asking you to do is provide money for the Police Department from the school district's money. Um, this is, this could have been presented a whole different way, but really what he's doing is he's asking for your bluff. He's saying that the school district will provide money for police officers or they don't have the, they don't feel brave enough to be without police officers in the schools. Um, the SRO program is unproven and I don't believe that it should continue. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Hans. Uh, next, uh, telephonically, we have Eugene Carl Haberman. He's not there, he's not in the queue. Uh, let, what about Keegan Burnier? Yes. Keegan, star six to unmute.
Hello, I'm here.
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. This evening, I'm speaking about how the ASD virtual students and teachers need your help. I have submitted lengthy written testimony regarding this matter and encourage you to read it. I am a parent to an elementary virtual student and am currently experiencing the shortcomings of the virtual program. Tonight, I will briefly address four issues. Issue one: There is a non-sustainable teacher-to-student ratio. There are 80 students in the only second grade class, 50 students in one of the third grade classes, and 70 students in the only fifth grade class. Parents are expected to teach their kids and virtual teachers spend an hour in a Zoom class. It sounds like teachers have plenty of time to reach all 80 second graders. But the bottom line is that parents can't keep up with the workload and virtual teachers are doing much, much more than spending one hour on Zoom to reach all of their students. The solution: Allocate more teachers to the virtual program. Issue two: No counselors or ELL teachers. ASD has stressed the importance in mental well-being and discussed students experiencing isolation and depression in the push to return to in-person. Virtual students are additionally experiencing significant stressors in their high-risk families. The one-size-fits-all mental well-being solution of returning to in-person class does not work for the virtual families. Virtual classes are difficult for elementary students and even more difficult for students where English is not their primary language. There are no ELL support services for these students. Being a virtual student does not mean they have less needs than in-person students. Solution: Allocate counselors and ELL teachers to the virtual program. Issue three: Less than one hour of social and emotional learning. There is a daily one-hour Zoom session to briefly cover English and math and anything else the teacher can fit in. The Zoom sessions are optional. This is the extent of the socialization for the students. The importance of socialization does not lessen if you are a virtual student. Solution: Allocate more teachers to the virtual program. Issue four: Heavy workload for virtual families. It is expected that a learner guide will spend four hours each day teaching the student. My full-time working family does not have enough time during the day to maintain our employment and provide a robust education to our virtual students. Solution: Allocate more teachers to ASD Virtual. I understand that ASD is short-staffed and overworked. In the most recent ASD correspondence, it was noted that ASD is pursuing many avenues to recruit and hire for open positions to lessen the strain. The issues with the ASD virtual program can be alleviated by allocating more teachers to the virtual to lower the class sizes. I hope that some of the ASD recruits will be allocated to the very underserved ASD virtual population. Please don't give up on virtual. Thank you.
Thank you, Keegan. Uh, next we have Erica Jones. Erica, star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, you have three minutes.
Alright, so today I wanted to talk to you about how the sub-s shortage is directly affecting our students. I'm a special needs preschool teacher at a title in school in our district and I see how the sub-s shortage is affecting not only my students, but the students in the rest of the school as well. And I'm sure this is not only to my school. But one of our trainings that we are required to take as educators is the ACEs training. This training is about trauma and trauma-informed practices and educating those students affected by trauma. I think we can all agree that we have all had trauma of some sort in the past two years. These kids have faced more trauma than most. Many have lost friends and family members. Many have lost their homes or had to move. Many have suffered from hunger or family stressors. Parents have suffered the loss of jobs. This is a lot for these kids to deal with. One of the things that we are taught during our ACEs training is that in order for children to move on from this trauma and to be able to learn, the trauma itself must be addressed first. It's not happening in our schools. Instead of helping the students deal with the trauma they've experienced, teachers are being told that they must push academics and push academics faster than ever before to ensure that these kids catch up to where they need to be. This is not the way to help children who've experienced trauma learn or to address their trauma. These kids need hand-on learning, learning that engages them, makes them want to come to school, makes them want to ask questions and learn more, makes them enjoy learning. They need science, math grades, literacy, phonics skills, not sit down and do the lessons which is what teachers are being required to give. These children need play, they need time to socialize with their peers, they need art, music, movement, all of which they should be receiving during specials such as art, music, gym. But unfortunately, they're not receiving these specials as the specialists are constantly being pulled into subbing classrooms. We have no subs at our school. It seems that we receive daily emails telling us that our students won't have gym today, won't have music, won't have art, all because the specialist teachers are going into the classrooms to sub for teachers who are out. They might be out sick or for other reasons, but they're out. Just today, an elementary school in our district had over 10 staff members out and were told that they would have no music or gym today. This has happened multiple times, every single week. This is the opposite of what these kids need. This is not helping our students succeed. I don't know what the answer is, but I know that kids are stressed, teachers are stressed. We need people. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Next in person, we have Tequita Parker. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Tequita Parker and I am the Membership Chair for the Alaska Black Caucus. I am also a member of the Education Committee within the Alaska Black Caucus. There have been numerous accounts of racism within the Anchorage School District. My son has graduated with his bachelor's degree and his master's degree. And when he was attending Bartlett High School, there was an incident involving a teacher where he was called a nigger. And to know in 2021, the same incidents are occurring within our last, within the Anchorage School District is concerning. You have a responsibility and an obligation to the parents, to the teachers, to the principals, to the youth, as well as to the community that put each and every one of you in your seat that you're in right now. "I don't know" is not a good response. Maybe it will take one of you or each of you to visit the schools within your community to find out what is going on within the Anchorage School District. What parents are experiencing racism? How many youths have contemplated suicide because they are afraid to go to school, because they have been subject to bullying and racial slurs on a day-to-day basis? Why, why is it that you guys are not aware of this? This is concerning. Children should not be afraid to go to school. Parents should not be angry because they reported incidents and the Anchorage School Board has done absolutely nothing to rectify the situation. Something has got to be done immediately. Implement the anti-racism policy. Implement the instructional equity policy. Do something. You have a responsibility and an obligation to the people that put you in your seats. And the fact that you don't know what's going on is disturbing. As a parent myself, that experienced a child being bullied, experienced a child having racial slurs on a day-to-day basis, this is unacceptable. It has to stop. It needs to stop. Something has got to be done. The question is, what are you gonna do? Thank you.
Thank you, Tequita. Next, we have Trinity Colvin in person. Trinity, welcome.
Take your time. I'm excited.
Uh-huh. Awesome. You have three minutes.
Hi. Well, hello everyone, my name is Specialist Trinity Colvin. I work with the Ninth Army Band and I work, uh, within operations. So the scope of my job is public outreach. So, um, also, our mission, of the Ninth Army Band is to strengthen the bond between the military service and the community. I actually grew up here, I'm a graduate of East High School. Um, the first time I saw an army band was actually at Aquarian Charter School and that is the reason why I'm a musician within the army today. And I'm very, very, very grateful that I had that experience. And I would like to use, you know, this opportunity to give back to the schools that encouraged me to follow my dreams as a musician. So I'm here today because I've heard a lot of testimonies saying that there is a need for more teachers, just more opportunities, more, you know, just more for the kids because they, they, they need it. This is a very, very, very difficult, you know, thing that we're fighting. We can't see it, but it's, it's out there. So, um, I'd like to use this opportunity to ask for some sort of partnership between the school district and the Ninth Army Band, whether it's implementing, um, a summer program or after-school classes between our musicians and students. Majority, if not everyone, that is a part of our band, um, they are prior educators. Also, they hold multiple bachelor's and, uh, master's degree programs. So I, I firmly believe that they are more than qualified to work with these students. Um, I have a personal passion to work, working with kids and young adults. I've worked with Child Youth Services for about four years out of my entire army career thus far. And, um, sorry, I'm getting lost here, I'm a minute. Yes, so, um, I've, I've worked with kids before, my personal passion is working with kids. And growing up here, I've noticed that there's only, the only music that's even offered in schools is primarily classical music. The program that I would like to implement within the school district and give to the students is working more towards contemporary music and encouraging students to become their own artist. Um, it is because of teachers like Melissa Fisher and Jill Niemeyer that inspired me and encouraged me to become my own artist, not just a member of a choir or a member of a band. So, um, with that being said, I'm thankful for the time you've given me today to speak to you about hopefully some sort of partnership between the Ninth Army Band and the Anchorage School District. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Trinity. Uh, next telephonically, we have Sandra Thompson. Star six to unmute.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Anchorage School Board, Dr. Bishop and the Anchorage School District team. I am Sandy Thompson Wallace, still the proud president of Totem Association of Educational Support Personnel and a 25-year employee of this district. I last testified at the August 17th board meeting. I was hopeful at that time that Totem would be successful at working together with the district's bargaining team to complete negotiating a new successor contract to ours that expired on June 30th. But unfortunately, two months later, we find ourselves in the same place with no contract at impasse and heading to advisory arbitration. This is not where we wanted to be, 11 months and no agreement. Since March of 2020, or 2019, when this district shut down, our Totem employees have gone above and beyond to support the students that come to the Anchorage School District to receive a great public education. The families who enroll their students with us count on that every day and that is what Totem employees deliver, side by side with our colleagues across the district. Repeatedly, we have heard from management that they value the work that Totem provides for this district, yet over and over again, we have asked and are waiting for that value to be shown at the bargaining table. The district has shown its willingness to offer a temporary $10 extra an hour for Totem employees taking over a classroom as a teacher, a dollar more an hour if we work with those students in special programs, $2 more an hour if we work in behavior support classrooms, and a dollar fifty if we must cover for vacant clerical positions or absent office coworkers. We are valuable to you, but only up to a point. We are working to the point of exhaustion, covering positions you cannot fill or for substitutes you cannot get. Yet, we are still waiting for you to offer us a living wage instead of giving us a little here, a little there, thinking that it is sufficient. I am here to tell you, it is not. My ask for you in August was to keep the money at the closest point of the pencil where it belongs. Today, I add, "If not now, then when?" When are you going to recognize that Totem employees are a valuable part of this district, deserve to be treated with respect and recognized for the contributions made every day on behalf of our kids, our most valuable resource? If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Uh, next telephonically, we have Elizabeth McGee. Alright, let's try again for Gladys Dennis. Nope, not in the queue. And Eugene Carl Haberman, not in the queue. Okay. Okay, so that ends our first hour of testimony. We got through all speakers except for the action item speakers. Alright. Uh, you will find attached to the agenda, um... Uh, you will find attached to the agenda, um, written testimony as well. That brings us to item E on our agenda, Superintendent Update. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. I do not have a, a formal presentation or other things to share. I just want to give thanks to our employees of ASD for carrying out nearly one quarter of, of keeping schools open and working towards supporting kids and their families. And it is tremendous, and I've said it at every meeting, written it in letters, that it's exceptional work. And, um, you know, there's, uh, from testimony and from everywhere, um, you know, we'd have to have our head in the sand if we didn't think it wasn't a difficult year for everyone. And, um, we continue to reach out, to hire. There are over 200 open positions and we look to compete and, uh, support people to come to ASD. And so a lot of this, um, really is our workforce. And, um, we're continuing to work. I don't, um, I don't have a, a perfect solution. I don't think that most, uh, places in Anchorage do or around the country, especially for, uh, people who work in education, all the way from superintendents and board members to people who work in schools and classrooms. It's, it's been a tough 18 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Are there any, um, comments at this time from the board? Uh, Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Dr. Bishop, we heard some testimony tonight about a parent not being allowed to attend their child's class. I know some parents are able to be in classrooms. I don't understand what the issue was there.
We could look into that. I don't have, um, knowledge of that with, you know, over 3,000 teachers. So I can look into that. Um, we generally follow up, um, with their concerns.
So is there some special step the parent needs to make at this point to be able to go to their child's classroom?
Uh, through the President, to Member Donley, we do have, um, a volunteer protocol, very simple. Um, it's, you know, they just, uh, we have that through, um, our community outreach and, but, um, short of something that I don't know about in the school, um, it could be anything. Uh, it could be a concern. So I, we'd have to look, look up, look into it. But we, uh, do have volunteers in our schools, uh, presently.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be good if we could reach out to the lady who testified and find out what the situation was there.
I, I know there's no problems at Sissetna or Seawick Park. Mr. Halligan?
I was gonna say, it would be good just to say what a parent who feels like they're turned away should do. How would they react to try to get into a classroom?
Sure. Um, really starting at the school level to understand why, and that's what we're going to do, is, uh, really go back to the school level and, and understand, uh, the situation or the concern or just the process, um, uh, about that. But, uh, start at the school level and, um, we can follow, now that it came to the board, we'll also follow up. But anyone who has a concern about, uh, their child in the classroom in the school, we always start at the level that it can be solved the quickest, which is at the school level.
Okay. Yes. Member Lessen?
Thank you. I wonder, Dr. Bishop, if you could speak a little bit to ASD Virtual. There was, calling up on the testimony, um, maybe you can give us a brief, very cursory overview of what is the scope of ASD Virtual? Are class sizes as large, in fact, as the individual spoke about? Is that unex, is the, is the enrollment unexpectedly large in any way? And are there resources, um, to address some of those pretty deep concerns? That was four questions in one.
Uh, sure. So, um, there has been, uh, staffing allocated. It's just a matter of being able to hire people. And so, uh, ELL staff especially, uh, in, in the entire district. But, um, there is an interest in ASD Virtual. Uh, we had estimated it, um, to be about, um, one-fourth of its size last year, and it, uh, is 50% of the size. So there's, uh, interest in ASD Virtual and learning. And we have, uh, students are enrolled through their homeschools so that they can continue. And, uh, a lot of our students actually are blended. They'll go into the school building for some classes and then take virtual on some classes. So we, we leave that open, uh, to the families about what makes most sense to them.
And, uh, if you need more, uh, member lessons, we can, you can maybe send a question if you need more information and we can get that information in Board Connect. Okay. Oh, Member Higgins.
I normally cut the light on. You see, I don't have to raise my hand that way. I appreciate that. I heard a number of statements, uh, a few minutes ago about racism, discrimination in schools, and I, uh, did see your email earlier in regards to encouraging people to recognize that within the community, well, or within the country and the state and the, and the community, you, you're going to have that in schools. The question I think that many of the parents would have is if they don't feel like it's being handled in the school, where do they voice those concerns? Where, where should they, if they feel like, you know, there, there's discrimination issues that aren't being adequately handled, what do you recommend? Where should they go if it's outside the school?
Sure. So there's many, uh, through, uh, Member Bellamy to Member Higgins, uh, many would call another individual, um, if, um, there's a concern with a, a teacher, certainly, they can talk to an AP or a counselor or the principal. If it is at the school level that they didn't think it was, uh, addressed, uh, then, um, certainly here, we have, uh, Conflict Resolution Forum that's online that our parents can, can, um, access as well. So lots of different avenues, but certainly if they call my office or the board, send a board note, they, we always respond and follow up with concerns.
And, and I'd like to add also that on our website, we have some problem-solving options as well, um, that begin internally and go external. Uh, but I would think that, um, it would be my hope that we would, uh, once we know what's happening, we would respond immediately, uh, as quickly as possible at the school site, uh, and then move into other options. And they're all listed on the website. So we can make sure that we get those problem-solving options out for people.
And, and might I add that it's not only the initial issue, but it's also just a, a good concern and a reminder for us of the follow-through that is needed in, in following up with students and, and parents, you know, after the concerns to see hasn't been resolved, um, things like that. And that can happen at any level as well.
I see, Member Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Question for the administration. I know the, um, regalia policy and the, the related AR are working its way through the governance process. Uh, I was curious if the administration is currently preparing, um, ARs related to the anti-racism and instructional equity policy? And is that something that, um, information or instructions need from the board on? Or is that right on the administration's court? Thank you.
Uh, well, certainly, uh, the policy is being addressed. We're designing, uh, training around it for a broader understanding of policy. And then as needed, uh, to understand what are the steps that actually should be spelled out? And that's generally in the AR, and it'll be around, uh, processes, training, things like that. So, uh, it's part of that, uh, entire package. And again, it isn't, um, you know, there, there's so much going on that no one issue is less important than another. Uh, but all of these issues, again, are hitting schools all at once, and, uh, we're working with our schools to understand the capacity, uh, of, of working together, really.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're moving on to...
And, um, just wanted to add one more thing that, uh, a, all people, I just, you know, shared employees and, and one of the employee groups that, um, has a special month that is Principal Appreciation Month. So I just wanted to say, give a shout out to your principals, uh, of the schools who are also working diligently, uh, to keep, uh, our doors open. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And yes, it's a month, right? Happy Principals Month. All right. That leaves us to item F, our consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed on the main agenda.
Need a second. Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any abstentions, I'm sorry, objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none. The consent agenda is approved as presented. And now we're on item G, action items. We have one action item. Uh, once we get the, don't we get a second first? Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, we have, the, the one action item that we have is ASD Memorandum Number 031. And we have several people signed up to testify on that item.
Madam President, I'd like to move, um, ASD Memorandum 031, Support of the 2021-2022 Return to School Operational Guidelines, Start Strong Plan. Second.
It's been moved in second that we, um, approve Memorandum Number 31. We do have, uh, public testimony. Let's start with, uh, Taylor Mitchell in person. Welcome back.
I am Taylor Mitchell. I'm with the Alaska Black Caucus and the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. Right now, I want to express my support of the memorandum, uh, for the Return to School Operational Guidelines, Start Strong Plan. Um, I do want to, um, suggest some, um, ways that we can make this plan better, uh, things that we can do. Uh, first thing would be, we need parental reporting, um, to the child's school if their child is COVID positive, um, but done using the honor system, um, to all eligible students and staff to get vaccinated, with the exception of those who have medical exceptions and making that clear, um, to students, to families, because I think there's a lot of confusion, um, around some of the mandates. And three, bring back close contact tracing for COVID-positive cases. I think it's extremely critical to make sure to include dates of possible contact or exposure for accurate contact tracing for families. This would help immensely. I know our nurses are, um, doing an amazing job. They're extremely overworked. They need help. So having accurate, uh, contact tracing and including those dates will help the nurses and the schools to be able to contact the right students and the right families. I think some of the more aggressive measures that we can take is making sure that we're using the federal COVID relief, uh, money to hire more staff to conduct contact tracing, making sure we have good air filtration systems in our schools, definitely needing to create smaller class sizes so students can spread out more. Right now, uh, a lot of kids are stuffed into classrooms with 25 to 30-plus students. Uh, classrooms are not really big. So if you haven't visited a classroom, I would definitely encourage you to go to elementary, middle school, high school, and definitely visit these classrooms, talk to these teachers, be a part of a class, and kind of understand what teachers are talking about, what community members are talking about, um, because the COVID mitigation, it's, it's really hard to implement those things when you don't have room and you don't have space. Um, so the fourth thing is, uh, definitely continue to approve, uh, ASD virtuels or ASD virtuals so families have good alternative options. Um, I will say, from my personal opinion this year, I'm the caretaker for my sister who is in the second grade, um, and so she is in that, uh, ASD virtual class that's got 80 students. Um, and so i- it is pretty ridiculous. The teacher is definitely overworked. I will say she is doing an amazing job of trying to connect with the students, um, trying to make class fun and interactive, but it is hard to provide individual attention when you do have 80 students. Um, and so I will say about the curriculum, I go through the curriculum with my sister. Um, I think that the curriculum is, is fine. I don't personally see any issues with it, but that doesn't mean that other students aren't struggling with it and that it can be looked at and definitely made better. Um, and I will say my sister, she is enjoying school and she's, you know, making friends the best that she can through this program, um, but definitely we can look to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. And then next telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp. Mr. Kemp, star six to unmute.
All right. Can you hear me?
You can hear you. Three minutes.
All right. All right. Uh, thank you to the board once again. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer, teach at ASD, and parent of two ASD students. I'm also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. Um, you know, Taylor Mitchell said, um, said it as eloquently as anybody I, I know, um, that we need to support the 2021, uh, 2022 Return to School Operations Guidelines, Start Strong Plan, ASD Memorandum, uh, 031. She also, um, excellently, brilliantly articulated the finer points that the district needs to consider while moving forward. I believe she stated, um, that you need to keep in mind the parental reporting, right? That you also need to, uh, consider, strongly consider, that weekly testing of all students. New York City Schools does it. Uh, even folks in our own state here, in St. Mary's on the West Coast of Alaska does it. All we would need to do is scale up. Of course, we have, you know, we need some staffing, uh, you know, but, uh, also all eligible students and staff, you know, need to definitely get vaccinated, you know, with verified medical exceptions, of course. California recently became the first state to authorize, uh, vaccinations, to require vaccinations, uh, inoculation, inoculations of all staff and students. Um, you know, we, we could become the second. We could. Uh, that would be on the state of Alaska, but, uh, the district could follow suit. Um, so I would just want you to consider all the things that Taylor, uh, laid out for you, uh, and, uh, you know, please move forward, uh, with this memorandum, with this new policy, uh, carefully, diligently, uh, and, and, and with Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Uh, next, we have Eugene Carl Haberman. I do not see him in the queue. Uh, what about Jill Harder? Jill, star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You have three minutes.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jill Harder. I'm a parent of 10-year-old twins who are in fifth grade in Anchorage, in the school district, um, calling in with my support for ASD Memorandum 31. Um, first off, I want to thank ASD School District and the board for implementing these guidelines and getting our kids back into school. I'm one of the fortunate ones who already worked from home with my own business. So when my kids went virtual in March 2020, the impact to me was minimal. However, I realize how hard it was for so many families out there, and I don't know what I would have done if I were in that position. There were just a few hiccups getting connected, but on the whole, it was an easy transition. But what I quickly learned is that I'm not a teacher and I don't want to be. While I have supported teachers, it took this situation for me to realize how much I underestimated what they do, how much they do, how underappreciated they are, and how much, how underpaid they are. You couldn't pay me enough to be a teacher these days. It's shameful the way they're being treated by some parents and by ASD as their employer. These teachers are educating our future and they should be given all the tools they need instead of breaking them down by taking away everything they should have. My son has been through a lot at ASD, which is a story I plan to tell at a later date. But long story short, I had my son privately assessed and he was diagnosed high-functioning autistic at eight years old. He's extremely bright, funny, caring, compassionate, and way too smart for his own good. He was in the highly gifted program at Rogers Park for first and second grade, but the pressure on the kids to complete the work on specific timelines and specific ways doesn't fit all kids who need to work things out differently. And the pressure was so bad that I finally had to pull him out of school the last quarter of second grade because he said to me he didn't feel safe at school. He started third grade in Cassoon's SBS, SBBS program, and it's been a year, a few years of getting him to actually want to go to school and be productive, but he's finally at that point now. He likes going to school. He's doing his work. He's having fun and he's making friends, and it is imperative that he is able to stay in school. He is able to do all that while simply wearing a mask, which I was worried about because he has sensory processing issues. Fortunately, he's been able to wear a mask without any problems, and because he knows how important they are, he is very diligent about wearing his. My daughter, on the other hand, is a bit of a social butterfly, so her virtual learning was very difficult. Her grades suffered and she was not her happy-go-lucky self. Now that she's back in school, she's so happy and has no problems wearing her mask. Do they like wearing masks? No, not at all. But most of the time, I have to tell them to take them off when they get home because they forget they're wearing them. I ask... I ask that the Anchorage School Board continue to support these guidelines, continue to require masking, and help keep our kids safe and physically in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, I have Roslyn. Uh, she's not here in person. Roslyn Grady Weiss. Dr. Paula Williams. Star six to unmute.
Um, good evening. I am Dr. Paula Williams. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, thank you. I'm Dr. Paula Williams, and I'm a proud member of the Alaska Black Caucus and the co-chair of Alaska Black Caucus Education Committee. And I would like to also echo Danielle Kemp, Taylor Mitchell, and Tekeah Parker as it relates to racism, especially being twenty-three years into a school year. Also want to thank Kennedy because the freshmen know that we do have BIPOC and Black students who have started their school year and also that are actually looking forward to being at school and enjoying their core study. But I am actually going to be testifying on tonight in light of what's happening with the assembly ordinance that they're passing for mandated masking for the district, I'm going back to there. I actually, in last Y D newspaper, in the, um, the Anchorage Daily News, Mayor Bronson, he wrote, certainly there are many studies that support the use of masks, but there are also several studies that have found masking and mask mandates largely ineffective. The studies Mayor Bronson was referring to were taken from the twenty twenty WHO guideline study and a May twenty twenty CDC report that included research from two thousand eighteen. But the science behind masking has evolved, uh, has evolved since these studies Bronson referred to. More than ten studies cited by CDC have since confirmed the benefits of universal masking on preventing community spread of the virus. In Alaska, public health officials and medical providers have near universally and consistently recommended the use of mask wearing as one of the most effective, easy, and inexpensive ways to slow community transmission, to protect hospital capacity, to prevent deaths. And I, and not only that, but also to our Senator Lisa Mouskowsky, who on her, on this past Friday, instead of taking a short weekend home, she saw urgent need to voice the president biting the concern that Alaska COVID nineteen numbers are at an all-time high. Alaska Daily News reported that in Alaska, we currently have per capita case rate is the highest in the U.S. and higher than any country in this world. And if this ordinance is not passed through the assembly because of the, of the, of what I'm saying, the mass outpour of parents and students who came out against masking in the state of Alaska, it stands to have the masking for, uh, our education system to be re-canted. And what I'm asking on tonight from the school board, I'm asking you to do not read that mandated masking in our education system. I want to thank you for this time.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Uh, our last, uh, person that signed up to testify is Erin Lawrence. Welcome, Erin. And you have, uh, three minutes.
Hello.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Okay. Let me pull up my thing here. Um, so my name's Erin Lawrence. Sorry, I'm gonna get really emotional. Um, I'm a parent of two children in the Anchorage School District. I'm here speaking out against the operational guidelines that require wearing of masks and the mention of the COVID vaccines. Um, both of my children have I E Ps for speech delays. Um, and then while at school for six hours at a, at a time, they're unable to see their teachers' faces, they're unable to see their classmates' faces, they're unable to see their mouths, their tongue movements, um, their expressions, their smiles. They're unable to hear their voices from the muffling of the mask, the mask and the inflection, um, uh, when they're speaking through the mask with better muffling all their voices. Um, if masks continue to be worn, um, this is going to negatively impact them and many children like them. Um, we've all seen a decrease in communication and social skills among our children because of these mandates, um, as noted in the superintendent's letter, um, um, to parents on October first. Um, I also want to preface by saying, um, that the passing and the long-term, um, effects experienced by children is awful. Um, this is not to be discounted, but if we live in a world where kids don't die, then we're not living in reality. Um, as of today, no children in the state of Alaska have died from COVID nineteen. Per the CDC, in twenty months, five hundred and fifty-eight U.S. children, um, out of seventy-three million have passed from COVID nineteen. Between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, twelve months, six hundred and forty-three children passed from the flu. How does this justify the fear for our children? Our children go to school and they don't have to wear masks on the playground, but they have to wear them during gym, um, at lunchtime. Their masks are not worn. Um, and they are being told that they can't talk to their friends and converse. How is that beneficial to their social and emotional developments that you guys are always talking about? The masks and the disinfection of surfaces continue to reinforce the paranoia and fear around germs that are natural. My children, like many others, have been exposed to COVID nineteen and continue to be healthy and if able to be tested, will probably show that they have antibodies. As a parent, I am asking you to please reconsider this requiring of masks in school. I'm also asking you to not even consider COVID vaccines requirements as A S D does not require the flu vaccine. If it comes to that, I would also encourage, um, the testing of antibodies, and I would also ask that COVID nineteen be added to the state and Alaska exemption and immunity form. Um, the science continues to evolve every day on antibodies. As someone said in the assembly meeting last night, we are sacrificing the health and well-being of our younger generation for the health of our older generation, and we cannot keep doing this. I also want to say that I've looked around this whole meeting and I've seen almost everyone touching, moving, drinking, moving their glasses. And once you touch your face, your mask, it does not work any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to testify on, uh, this, uh, memorandum? Okay, seeing none. So the, uh, recommendation, uh, is to, um, is that we accept the report. Now, uh, uh, our plan has been in place since August sixteenth or August ninth. Can't remember. Uh, we are, we were delayed in getting the, uh, re, uh, uh, reissuing the memo uh, in support of, which gives the superintendent the authority to, um, do the mitigation plan. And this memo is in support of that and continuing that authority. So what is the board, the motion before you is to accept? What is the will of the board? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, it's unfortunate we're doing this on the same night the Assembly is having a meeting where, where the very similar subject of, um, you know, mandatory masking for the community is, is up at the same time. Uh, as we've been watching the days of testimony there, we know how strongly, you know, there is opposition to our community, uh, to mandatory masking policy as evidenced by that overwhelming public testimony that's occurring at the Assembly. Um, you know, more kids die from the flu in a typical year than are dying from COVID nineteen. That's, that's a fact. Yeah, we don't, we've never advocated for mandatory masking for the flu. Um, um, both Kenei and, um, Matsu School Districts, um, are continuing to use a school-by-school masking policy. And I think that's a, a much more reasonable policy than a mandatory one all across the school district. And it, you know, I mean, the Matsu developed, I think, a very reasonable matrix. Uh, let's see each school individually and assesses the risk level at that school and then makes a determination based on those facts and that data about whether masking should be mandated in that particular school. And I think that's a more reasonable approach than a universal masking policy, which may not be necessary at all at certain locations within a district as large as ours. Um, the CDC, if anything, has been inconsistent regarding masking policy over the last year and a half since COVID began. And as we all know, many European countries are not requiring masks and for their schools, and especially not for students below the age of twelve. In fact, the Uni-European Center for Disease Control advises specifically that masking is advised when feasible for those older than twelve, but specifically recommends against masking for students under twelve, twelve and under. Um, Sweden has never used masks in its, its school, public schools. Ireland rejected it this year. Wales has rejected it this year. England has rejected mandatory masking this year. Denmark doesn't use mandatory masking in their schools. Finland doesn't use mandatory masking in their schools. Switzerland doesn't use mandatory masking in their schools. And other countries in Europe have focused their masking policies on only the secondary students. And if you think about it, there's a lot of logic to that, Madam President, because in our secondary s- s- schools, the kids move around from class to class. You know, they have periods, right? They're out in the hallways interacting. Uh, unlike our elementary schools where the kids are in one classroom for the entire day. There's a lot better control offered there, and I think that's one of the main reasons. And also the physiological, biological implications of the, the effects upon the younger kid's ability resisted, that these European countries are, are drawing a dichotomy between their older students and their younger students and their masking policy. Norway explicitly advises against masking primary school-aged children, and they're going to phase out quarantines and, and they're going to a more, uh, system that's more based on rapid testing in their schools rather than mandatory masking. Iceland, they only require it for secondary students, but only when they're moving around school. Once they're in their classroom, they don't mandate it. It's only when they're moving around, which makes a lot of sense because there's all that interaction going on. Austria requires face masks for the first fourteen days of the school years, school year, but students were still able to remove their mask once they were seated in their classrooms. So, you know, I would say that England, Sweden, Denmark, Finland, Switzerland, Iceland, Norway, these are very sophisticated, developed countries that have a lot of medical expertise. They're renowned around the world, in fact, for their medical expertise. I, I just want to be clear here that I acknowledge that France is now masking their students. It's a new development in France, apparently. But when you look at the history of masking in France, they only shut down their schools for twelve weeks last, oh, since COVID, where the United States, we shut down our schools an average of fifty-eight weeks. I think that was an overreaction, um, at the time. I didn't support closing the schools down the way we did because I, and I understand that we didn't know what we were dealing with, but I think it got carried away.
Uh, Member Donley, if I might, uh, uh, I'll let you continue, but masking is one component of our mitigation plan. The intent of memo thirty one is to support the mitigation plan that we are currently using and have been using since August ninth.
So in what way are my comments inappropriate?
I didn't say they were. I'm just clarifying it so, so that, because you want to, it sounds to me like you're interested in re-doing something about the, the mask, about masking, and that's not the intent of what we're, what's before us. We're looking at the entire mitigation plan, not pieces of it. So you may continue, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, I recognize that, Madam President, but clearly in this community, the mandatory masking policy is the most constant, constant, controversial aspect of this plan. And so I do think it's, it merits a full discussion. Um, at this mo-, at this time, I would, uh, move an amendment to the memorandum that under pertinent facts on page one, page paragraph two, insert, "The board recommends that the plan be revised to utilize a school-by-school masking policy similar to that used by the Matsu Borough School District."
Is there a second? Hearing no second, that motion fails.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could continue. Uh, I would move that under pertinent facts, page one, paragraph two of the memorandum thirty one, that the following language be inserted, "That the board recommends that the plan be revised to utilize a school-by-school masking policy similar to that used by the Kenei School District."
Is there a second? Hearing none, that motion, that motion fails.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would move that under pertinent facts, page one, paragraph two, that the following language be inserted, "That the board recommends that the plan be revised to reinstate the summer school optional masking policy for kindergarten and first graders."
Not hearing a second. That motion also fails.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would move that in the memorandum under pertinent facts that we add at the end of paragraph two after the word professionals, that the board encourages the superintendent to remove the mandatory mask policy as soon as it is safe to do so.
I'd like to second for discussion. It's been moved in second that we amend, uh, memo thirty one to add at the end of paragraph two, after professionals, add, "The board encourages the superintendent to remove the mandatory mask policy as soon as it is safe to do so."
Madam President, may I speak to my motion?
You may.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Member Lessons, for giving me the opportunity to speak to the motion. Um, when we did what we did when COVID first hit, I think it took a long time to correct the ship. I mean, I think, I, I, I fully acknowledge we were in uncharted waters there. We, we, we initially utilized a mistaken matrix that wasn't designed for schools, but the superintendent has pointed out that there was no other matrix available at that time. But once we started to realize that we were using mistaken matrix, it was really hard to make the adjustments. It was, and I would like the board to clearly be on record as saying that if conditions change and if it's safe in the superintendent's, um, uh, evaluation to not require universal mandatory masking, that she do that, that she adjust to the conditions. And that we recognize that she may, you know, and we actually encourage her to do that if she finds it's safe to do so.
Any other comments?
Yes. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Um, in, in a way, I, I agree with Member Donley. I, I would love to have some kind of a benchmark out there, a goal, a carrot, a something to encourage an exit out of the quagmire that we're in. Um, the difficulty that I have with the word safe is that, as we see right now, um, people aren't even agreeing on whether or not it's safe right now. And so I don't think that's an easily defined word. You know, we could say something like when case rate is less than ten per hundred thousand or define a, a scope of time, you know, when families who may be interested in having their children vaccinated under twelve, uh, have had the opportunity to do so for a period of two or three or four or six months. Um, or when vaccine rates are high enough across, you know, our, our district, our municipality. I feel like those are more tangible benchmarks. Um, I would love to see an exit strategy. I'm just not personally sure that the word safe gets us there. Um, so I'd be interested in hearing if anybody else has any other thoughts.
Okay. Okay, we'll go with Member Higgins and then Holloman.
Thank you. Um, you know, my problem with all this issue is that, uh, remember the study that came out of Texas Tech? We, we tend to have a of Texas Tech, we tend to have a view and then we look for facts to support it. And we're not being persuaded by the facts as much. And so I can find data that will support almost any view, and we can reach out for that, but I'm looking, and I will acknowledge, and I think most people do, science is not knowing the facts, it's developing always, it's learning new things. And along those lines, the same thing with masks, the same thing with vaccines and the like. The number one thing to reduce the hospitalization with the intensive care is clearly vaccines. I mean, the numbers are overwhelming in regards to that, and yet we've got people, you know, denial on that issue, and that's a concern. And in the mask, the issue of being safe is really ambiguous. Are you using CDC guidelines, are you using the American Pediatric Association? Are we just using data that we go out and find that then supports that it's safe? Because you can, as you said, you've looked at other countries, you see what they're doing, that proves that it's safe to do it without. A lot of people feel that way right now, and yet what we're getting from the scientists and the medical community is no, that's not the case. And what, so what, I don't like, I don't like giving the idea of safe and getting into an argument and a dispute on that. I hope that we're following the guidelines and recommendations from those who are studying this situation, recognizing that they will end up evaluating new data and draw new conclusions. We have new variants that's coming out all the time, you know, the Mu is next, and that is, and the one after that they're predicting is really going to hit the kids. And we got some saying it may not, the vaccines may not work, all the other predictions, that's all guesswork, okay? So we don't know what's going to come up. But I don't like the idea, just because you can find data to support one position or the other, I don't want to get into an argument on that line. I want to look at the horde science, we're basing it on that, and ambiguous words at best, "safe," is disputed right now. Some people will say it's safe today. I think you brought it up yourself, this, other countries have done this, or other school districts, they've closed schools too, and had impact. And I got to tell you, the mask issue, well, my, one grandson was positive, is from lunch, because they were eating lunch together, they were exposed right next to someone, get identified as positive, and he did come down positive as a result, but it's because the mask was down. I mean, we're convinced that that's who he eats next to. So I appreciate this issue is controversial, but I want it to be based upon science, I want it to be based upon best information we have right now, recognizing that there were, you can find data that's contrary to that, I accept that, but I don't want to get into that issue of saying just because I can find data separately, that that validates that position. I want it to be sound, I want it to be the best data we got, and not any data we can do. So using the word "safe" is something I can't support.
Thank you. Member Holloman.
Yes, I'd like to point out, this is a little bit different than a lot of the motions we consider. And it's not setting policy, and it's not explicitly directing the superintendent, it is in support of the existing plan. And as we've seen, she will make modifications to the day-by-day operations as she looks at the situation. We came off of the spring semester where we had universal masking, we went into summer school, and that was pulled back because the conditions changed. I think that was a wise decision, and it was done without coming to the Board, because we had not restricted, and we had not directed in a way that controlled what she was doing. I think in this case, that is a smart way forward. If I had any doubt that she would keep universal masking in place longer than it was really needed, or appeared to be, I might be inclined to vote for this. I have a funny feeling that the moment she feels like it's safe, it's going to go away. I'm just guessing, and I haven't actually asked her, but I've been watching everything we've been doing, and I think everybody wants it to go away, everybody wants to be done with it. But we have a population, we have a community right now that's on fire. We have some of the highest rates in the country. And I do want to say that what we hope to get from mask isn't a cure, isn't an absolute stop, it doesn't mean that people won't get it, but in large groups of people that are close together, doing things like breathing and talking and eating, the more they use masks, the less COVID will transmit. It won't stop it completely, it will just lessen it. And right now, we need for it to be lessened, even if it's just a little bit, because we're at critical points. So I, I don't think we need to say it, because I think that's the disposition of the superintendent to begin with. If I looked around and I saw what seemed to be a safe situation, and there didn't seem to be any reaction from the district, then yes, I'd want to bring it up and emphasize that, but I don't see that as the source of the problem. So I prefer that we continue to take ownership of the policy as a board, because we are letting it go forward, and I think the public needs to hear whether or not we've looked at it and we understand it. But I think we need to keep specific directions out of it as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. I would also like to call the Board's attention to, under pertinent facts, 1, 2, third paragraph, "Consistent with the superintendent's pre-existing operational authority, the Board expects the administration to implement the 2021-22 Return to School Operational Guidelines and revise the plan as deemed necessary and as informed by evolving community conditions and guidance provided by local, state, and federal medical and public health professionals." So I agree with Member Holloman that we don't need to give specific guidance. Okay, Kelly, I mean, Member Lessons, and then Member Jacobs.
Yeah, this is really a question.
Madam President, point of order. Member Lessons has already spoken to this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
I would like to make an amendment to the motion. And, Madam Secretary, I can give it to you if you need. I believe I transmitted it to you digitally. I move to amend the amendment to strike, "Remove the mandatory mask policy and replace with implement, modify, or cease the use of specific mitigation measures as the best available science and local, state, and medical health, local, state, and federal medical health experts determine it is appropriate to do so." Second. Madam President, can I speak to my amendment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I also, I echo Vice President Holloman's statement that I trust that the superintendent doesn't intend to keep any single implement, the implementation of any mitigation measure that is in our plan a day longer than necessary. I think I echo some of the sentiments that we heard during public testimony today, that our community is tired, our workforce is tired, our students are tired, our families are tired. We want to move on from this, but this clearly isn't the time. We am familiar with some of the successes of European countries, Norway specifically, is interesting in that their population is nearly 70% vaccinated, their community transmission rate as an entire country of over 5 million people is less than Anchorage, Alaska, and Alaska as a whole. We have heard from our medical providers that this isn't the time to be doing anything but listening to the best available science and our local, state, and medical health professionals. We have heard from the Anchorage Chief Medical Officer that even controversy around the efficacy of mask use when worn properly is political, and so I want to make sure we steer clear of that boondoggle, and so I'm hopeful this amendment does that. And we can add this language while also accomplishing Member Donnelly's goal of making sure that we get back to normal as soon as possible.
Could you repeat that? Okay, I see it here. Okay, I see it. All right, now, let's see, who has not spoken? Member Wilson?
I just wanted to echo what Member Holloman said, as well as what Member Jacob said. I do believe that the superintendent and her staff, as well as the professionals in the community that they're working with, have shown that the mitigations will change, the operational guidelines will change based on the need. And at this point, for example, this summer, the COVID numbers were lower, and students had a different masking policy at school. When we came back into school, of course, things have changed. I do believe that once our COVID numbers decrease in the community, and there is a lesser effect, negative effect in the hospitals, that they will reassess that situation again. So I, again, echo what Member Holloman said, is I believe that the staff, the administration, has already shown that they are doing that, and I believe will continue to do that.
Thank you. Okay, now, Member Lessons.
Yeah, thank you. This is really more of a point of clarification as to what specifically this memo accomplishes. I mean, I've heard you say this is intended to support the plan, this is an intention for the Board to demonstrate its support for the plan. It's not a policy statement, it doesn't direct the superintendent. I guess one of my questions was, does this document specifically redelegate power to the superintendent? Or does the document created on August 18th, 2020, still dictate that? Or are we ultimately governed by Board policy with this? I'm just wondering what's...
So as you might recall, that in the guidance that the prior Board gave to the superintendent in terms of being responsible for the operational guides for mitigating COVID, that expired August 18th. And so we were, the intent was to re, to give that authority back to the superintendent, so that she didn't have to keep running back and forth to us for guidance, when she would be, and her staff would be in a position to have the best medical, state, local, and national guidance possible. So, and I do think that we, I know last year, I think we did send a copy of our approval to the state, to accompany our plan.
Thank you. I guess I wasn't aware that there was a, that the previous memo had expired.
It did. It was only for a year, and this one is the same. Let's hope we don't need it for a year. Dr. Bishop, your comment on the motion?
Sure, I just appreciate the dialogue, it's good to have it. And in speaking about just the understanding of policy, being a quarter of the school year is almost expired, it really demonstrates the difference, and the movement of governance versus operations and operations, because operationally, we have needed to make adjustments. The plan that was announced in July for the start of school actually has changed several times in really iteration, and actually to have more leniency and more flexibility. And so thank you for acknowledging that has occurred and will occur. I think through this pandemic, we want the best answer, and sometimes we want to look in someone else's backyard. And it's just kind of funny, because just this past weekend, I'm reading letters to the Boards of some of the other districts that have been mentioned, that they CC'd me because I was, we want to do it the way Anchorage does it. And so, from teachers, from parents, we're just an unsettled place. And the way I see moving forward, and our understanding, is that the universal masking, we have families and brothers and sisters, and so to us, it made sense that we treat this as families, and so it isn't one school here and one school there. Economy of scale, when you have a school of 1,200, it looks very different than a smaller school. So we thought supporting our families and having a single understanding would be beneficial. So that's some of the understanding there. The pressure that we would put on individuals at schools would be another pressure that our principals and our teachers don't need at this time. I am happy to have all the anger and frustration and consequences placed at our level to leave the people in the building to do their work and take care of the children. And so I am okay with it being a district operational decision, so that we can be nimble. And consequently, you know, Colonel Delamater shared that as well, that they moved to a place that their base leadership could be nimble during these times. And so I just appreciate from the Board the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So you have before you an amendment to the amendment to strike, remove the mandatory mask policy, and replace with implement, modify, or cease the use of specific mitigation measures as the best available science and local, state, and medical health experts determine it is appropriate to do so. Ellie, did you have any comments? I'm just, we didn't get your comments. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, yeah, so I, hold on, I was not prepared.
It's okay.
I personally think masks should like stay, you know, I know from my school, a lot of people don't wear them. It's to the point where our principal has to stand outside of the doors when people come in to lunch, to make sure everyone's wearing one and wearing it correctly. So I think it is a big issue in schools that people aren't wearing it correctly, like they have it on, but it's always under their nose. So I feel like if you were to do it to what, you know, the CDC is enforcing, some people might try and either question it, or people won't get vaccinated, which I think, you know, all high schoolers are available for vaccines, and even middle schoolers, like, I feel like there should be a little bit more of a push to that, because, you know, it's not going to help anything if you're just not helping the issue. You know, it's not going to help if you're not putting in your part. So it's kind of like a, I don't know, it's kind of like a toss-up. But I think it is, like, when I see remove the mask man, like, the mid-point mask policy, it does like strike up like a, oh, no more masks, but then when you read it, it's following the CDC, I think would be the correct way to go, just so it's whatever the state is asking.
Okay, thank you. All right, I still think the third paragraph, under pertinent facts, speaks very clearly to what should be happening and when, in terms of what, you know, the process and when it's available to do whatever, or make any changes to our plan. So I guess we'll call the question.
I'll just make one comment here. I think we're sending a positive statement here, that we're not basing it upon the politics, we're trying to base it upon the science, we're trying to be consistent with it, and I don't think that's a bad message to students, to staff, to the community, that where we're going forward. I know it's a controversial issue, we're saying we're following the science, and not just the political aspects of it, so I will support this. Thank you.
So I guess I want to hear from staff, what would be the...
Madam President, in speaking directly to this amendment, I do find that this is problematic just because I've had weekly discussions with medical experts. There tends not to be a total alignment of local, state, and medical experts, and it shares that the "and" in there is pretty strong. It's not "and/or." We many times don't have an alignment of local and state, many times, on such things as, should masks be worn outdoors? This is a present issue. There is now a group that says, no, keep them off, we need a break with them, and another one that says, well, yeah, depending on the side, I mean, it's, even science, as Mr. Higgins said, and experts, you know, everybody shares an opinion, and then we overlay that on the operations and reality. And then, we overlay that on the operations and reality of schools and doing what's best for our children. If you recall, last year, the American Academy of Pediatrics did not agree with other doctors. And so, we are just using everything that's out there that we could possibly have great dialogue on, include people, overlay it on our district, and make decisions. And so, I don't want to be, you know, contrary, but this not, there's nobody saying, we all agree and let's do this. Every decision is a dialogue and a debate, internally, externally, at the city, at the state, at the national level, at the world level. And so, if we're waiting on this, it would be very difficult, just to let you know.
So, the science and local, state, and health medical experts would be problematic, that part. Would the maker of the motion accept the "and/or"? Or would that, no?
I don't even think the "or" sounds very good. Of course, we want to do our best. But if you read into it, that they deem appropriate, you know, getting everybody on the same page has never happened since the beginning of this for me. It is just a decision-making tree about what we do in our district for our children and families.
Okay, Member Holloman.
Yes, I was going to say, I think I heard Member Jacob's intent when he made the amendment, and I agree with that. But I think that Superintendent Bishop is reading it correctly, that in essence, this hands the authority to make the decision off to disparate groups that are not part of the district. I still want her to make the decision because she's the only person we can fire. And we need to keep that in-house. So, I will oppose the amendment.
My world might have been very different. That would probably be easier than what I did.
You don't need to talk anymore tonight.
You're not getting that kind of reward from us.
Any other comments? We are, I'm going to call the question on the amendment to the amendment. You have it before you. We'll have a student vote first. Yes. Or you can give Katie your vote. So, that passes two yays to five nays. I mean, it fails, I'm sorry. Okay, so, the amendment to the amendment fails. Two yays, five nays. So, now, we are back to the original amendment. It was, "The board encourages the superintendent to remove the mandatory mask policy as soon as it is safe to do so." Ready to vote? Okay.
Did wrap up?
I'm sorry?
Could I do wrap-ups then, if everybody's had their chance to talk?
On this, or on your motion?
Thank you.
Yes, she was just trying to pull it up. You got it? Okay. All right, Member Donley, you can speak to your thoughts there for your motion.
Yeah, I really agree with the comments from Member Higgins about it's a moving target. And that's one of the reasons that I felt I wanted to leave it up to the superintendent. Because even if you look at what Dr. Fauci said about herd immunity, it started out at 60, 70%, then it went to 75%. Now, it's up to 80%. There's so much evolving science with this that I struggle to try to find some permanent existing standard that would be appropriate. And so, that's, I agree with your comments, but that is actually why I couldn't come up with a more objective standard, because it's moving so rapidly and changing so much. Then, I figured we had to leave it to one decision-maker's discretion to analyze. So, thank you, Madam President.
Sure. Other comments? Call the question. You are now voting on the original amendment, under pertinent facts, add at the end of paragraph two, after professionals, add the words, "The board encourages the superintendent to remove the mandatory mask policy as soon as it is safe to do so." Student, Ellie? Uh, yes. Yeah. Did it take it? Okay. Three yays, four nays. That vote pass, fails, sorry. All right, moving on.
Madam President, I'd like to make a point of parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
If someone's recognized to speak on a motion, they can do that, or they can announce that they have an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of parliamentary inquiry. What section of Roberts' rules specifies that?
Off the top of my head, I'll say page 87, third paragraph.
He doesn't know.
Are you seriously saying page that?
No, I'm not being serious. But it is established in parliamentary procedure that if you, you can't speak to a motion and then spontaneously make an amendment about it, you can announce that you're making an amendment and then wait for a second. And if it happens, then speak to it. But you can't engage in debate and then make a motion in the same or recognition. I'll look it up and send it to you offline.
Thank you.
And I'll do the same, and I get allowed that. So, as said, you can blame me. Okay. We are, not see. Mr. Donley, did you have a?
I would ask to be able to make another amendment, but I didn't want to interrupt if anybody else had things to say before.
Does anyone have any other amendments to memo 31 that they would like to share? Not hearing any. It's back at you, Mr. Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that, under pertinent facts, the following language be added, "That the board encourages the superintendent to purchase and deploy additional COVID testing equipment at schools." I will sanction it for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved in second.
May I speak to my proposal? Thank you. Looking for my notes from the CDC that strongly encourages testing in schools. They came out very strongly in support of trying to do, to maximize the amount of testing done. And they say it's one of a very effective strategy. Big out my notes here, what the CDC says about it. Oh, here we go. The Centers, if I might read this from the CDC, "They say that such testing can get asymptomatic but contagious COVID cases out of schools more quickly, and is particularly valuable in areas with high transmission, a label that currently applies to the entire state of Alaska. And one scientific model found that mass testing of students could cut cases by more than half in schools where masks are required and vaccination and infection rates are low." So, we have, of course, required masks, but we do have, well, I'm not exactly sure about our prior infection rates. But even without that qualifier, the CDC recommends testing.
Thank you. I guess, Dr. Bishop, question? I know we have, in the Board Connect, you shared that we have testing in 26 schools?
Yes, at this time, I'd like, and we're actually engaged, Jennifer Petronas could come forward, as well as Kathy Bell. Jennifer Petronas is our Senior Director of Health Services, and Kathy Bell is our lead nurse. And they can share a little bit about what's happening right now in regard to the national supply of Abbott ID Now. We have those in 26 schools, but we've narrowed that because of the test kits. But we have expanded our symptomatic testing that can happen at school, which has, in the first couple of weeks of implementation, has had turnaround times within the same evening, if not the next morning. So, we've worked with a new vendor that we are deploying at other schools in our district. And I do want to share that the asymptomatic testing, we did do that last year. We engaged in that with our sports and with our staff and the vendor, just with the students in sports. The support and the supply in Alaska to be able to do Anchorage School District, only students who are participating in hockey and wrestling was limited support, was very difficult to pull off. And so, cities like New York, city like in our own state, St. Mary's was mentioned, they have outside agencies doing this work. And we cannot find one that can actually support at the scale of ASD. And again, we did, so, we have a testing program that our nurses and people can keep up with, although probably some nurses, it's difficult because of all the other jobs that nurses do. But I'll have our health folks speak to that.
Right now, there's a national shortage of the Abbott ID Now test kits. They are being prioritized by the federal government. And right now, Alaska does not know when they're going to get replenished of supply. So, currently, what we have in stock at the schools is the only thing that we have. So, we're asking nurses to really prioritize the use of those kits to students that don't have transportation to get a test, and everyone else that can drive to a municipality or a state site, or one of our own Beacon sites, that they do that. We have, as a Plan B, partnered with Beechtree Lab, which is a local lab. Our nurses will perform the test. The parents will consent online. And then, in the afternoon, our courier service will pick up all the tests, drop them off at Beechtree Lab. And usually, by 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. each night, the parent and the nurse will have the result, and at very latest, before they go to school the next morning. We are working as quickly as possible to implement it in all the Title I schools. We're doing five at a time. We did five schools today, and it went really well. Many of the nurses that just got their supplies were able to do five or more tests in a few hours. It's pretty simple. The longest part is really the parental consent and the signup process. We are hoping that as we are able to expand that across the Title I's, that we can eventually expand it to all the schools. But it's really resource-driven. It takes time to train, to get the iPads and supplies in, and also, to make sure the nurses are comfortable with the process.
I believe the number that was calculated, adjusted for the board's information, is that since the start of school, ASD has performed over 4,000 tests.
Okay, thank you. Just, you might stay, just in case, okay? Member Jacob.
Thank you, Madam President. I do actually have a couple of follow-up questions for our health team, so thank you. First question is, what have we done since the start of the school year? And what are we currently doing to offload as much of the testing workload to contractors and away from our staff, who have plenty of other things going on? And then, when we're working with the state testing sites, what happens to those results? Who gets them? And are we, do we have a level of cooperation between the municipality and the state regarding notifications that of positive tests of ASD students?
With the board president to Member Jacobs, we are really doing the best we can to take all the testing off the nurses' plates. We have contracted out Beacon, who has set up six separate trailer sites at our schools that offers tests to staff, students, and their household members. They are also struggling to just find people to fill in all the gaps day-to-day just because of the shortage of employees in our workforce. They are also provide, Beacon is also providing pop-up vaccinations as nurses request at their schools. And we're actually able to vaccinate quite a bit of students, staff, and families that way as well. So, they're kind of doing a dual role. We contracted out Beechtree to help us with testing. And even though the nurse has to do it, we're just happy that they're partnering with us and doing it for nothing, for ASD, doesn't have to pay anything. It's just the nurse. We have looked into various different programs to hire other people to help the nurses with those programs, but there's just no people in the community that we can hire at this point. And can you repeat the second part of your question?
Sure, yeah. I was looking for information as to what level of cooperation exists between ASD, the state health department, and the county health department regarding positive results that occur from ASD students.
That's a good question. Each day, sometimes twice a day, the state Epi department will emails myself and my team all the positive results of staff and students in ASD. We bump that up against with all the self-reports. And if there's anyone that we see has not self-reported, then we immediately notify the nurse to make sure that person is not at school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins? I see your lights on.
Sure. Thank you for that. I find it easier than raising a hand. I guess, the only thing I would make a point out, I realize there's limited resources. I also realize the impact of the testing, the benefits it's got. I've seen that firsthand in administering, being involved in these programs within a hospital, and the lack of it. Because you end up having one person, and you're not aware of it, and it spreads quickly. We've got, we're pulling back from isolating, you know, people who are positive with, you know, people who have been connected. And then, I'm concerned, like, in the entire classroom, when you end up having a breakout, and you've got several people there, we're not, you know, overreacting that way. Testing goes a long way to help us identify and prevent that from spreading. So, I don't see this as a mandate that you have to go out and buy things that are not for sale. And I don't see this as a mandate that you're supposed to use resources you don't have. I appreciate that. I think we're encouraging, though, particularly, I know one classroom where quite a bit of breakout. Testing could have helped a lot, I think, in identifying the ones that are there when you're not sending them home because of the contact issue. And so, I just, I support it for that reason. I just see it as something that is important. CDC, and I hate to say I agree with Member Donley. I don't want to make this public. But yes, I do agree with you that he's right. This is something that's being promoted. It's being by science, saying it is impacting. And I'm seeing the impact in employment locations, and I support it for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. So, it seems like the, we don't have the human resources to do it. But we're going to purchase and deploy additional testing equipment in our schools. When I think what I hear you saying is that we're doing what we can now, based on our capacity to do so, with the staffing that we have and the partners that we have. Do you think we can do more if we deploy? I mean, I don't know. It seems to me like we want to put the equipment in the schools, and we're not giving thought to how, to the human resources it's going to take to do it.
To the board president, we are planning on implementing testing in every school. We just have to roll it out as quickly as the resources that we have. We are working on ordering all the tablets that come with the testing for parent registration, which there's always shipping delays to Alaska. We have gotten about 21 in. We asked for more so that we could have at least two iPads in every school. And so, our big goal is to, by November, when we have all the nurses together to train in person, that whatever nurses have yet to have testing in their school, they're over to get trained that day, have all the equipment in hand, and is ready to go. That's the best-case scenario. But it really is dependent on the availability of the tablets and of the medium that is used to do the testing, and what the capacity of the lab is.
Okay, thank you. Who has not spoken that would like to speak? Okay, we'll go Holloman, Wilson, and then back to Higgins.
Well, I support the idea of more testing. Again, when the board speaks and votes, it puts a weight to something. And this is something I see should be at the discretion of the superintendent and staff to use their discretion and what the best way forward is as we're going. and what the best way forward is as we're going. I think they're doing what we can. Our motion sounds good, but I don't think it actually helps, and I would rather it's not be a distraction.
Based on what I'm hearing and the amendment that Member Donnelly proposed, it would make more sense to me personally if the amendment that Donnelly, that Member Donnelly proposed was changed slightly to read at the end of that sentence, "as supplies and resources become available." Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Petronas, the plan is, "as supplies and resources become available," to move to all of the schools, correct?
Through the Board President, Member Wilson, that is correct, but also the capacity of the local labs and the capacity of our school nurses. Some days, the nurses can do 20-plus tests, and other days, they may be able to do zero, depending on the amount of students coming in their office that are ill and injured.
So just a moment. Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
I am proposing an amendment to the amendment.
Then you need a second. Not here in a second?
Yes, you can speak to it. So when I say supplies and resources, and correct me if I'm wrong, but as, when I say resources, I include that as the human resources availability as well.
Any other comments? All right, Member Higgins?
I guess, the reason why I'm not going to support this, I don't see this as we're trying to test 40,000 kids and 10,000, you know, every school district employee and all, and that's not my goal. I see this as, it needs to be targeted more, but when you've got classrooms where it's breaking out, testing more in that classroom, and targeting that with more resources, to me, is a benefit. I've, you know, personal experience with grandkids and that, and I see that. I don't know the extent that we're able to do that right now, but if we tried to do all the kids, we can't do it. We're not going to have the resources, we're not going to be able to process it, it's not possible. But I do think it's possible to expand the testing program and encourage that, so that we're doing a better job of those that are in contact and those that are being exposed. We're not asking them to stay home, but their exposure to the class, to the other kids, and they are, you know, sitting crosswalk in the other lunch and other times. And so, to me, if we can expand it to a practical way, that makes sense. I'm not looking at, whatever resources are there, we test everybody, every kid, but I just see this as a practical statement of saying, if we can do this, and we can get more resources and target those classrooms, that's what my primary interest is.
Yes. I just want to, wondering what we're going to buy and deploy?
Yeah.
What is meant by that? That was my, I thought that was my question before. I mean, it does us no good to just buy and deploy, so. You know, I don't. We're on the amendment to the amendment right now, though. So the amendment to the amendment is to add language, "as supplies and resources become So I'm going to call the question. I mean, I, Ellie?
I want to put the whole amendment up there as it would be amended.
I will not support it, because I just think we're boxing the staff in, and we can't, they're already doing, they just shared with us, they're doing the best they can. And this is not a new, this is not new. They've been doing testing, they've been trying to do this. We've seen the reports in Board Connect. So we'll give Katie a minute to put that up.
Madam President, may I ask a question in the meantime?
Sure.
Perhaps of Ms. Petronas or Ms. Bell. There was a news item today that rapid-at-home COVID testing is about to become much more widely available. Is that a resource that the district could acquire in some capacity and use in the district? I mean, if at-home tests become widely available, is that a new option for increased testing capacity?
I mean, thank you. I can share, and we have had, that isn't new, because the state actually wants to purchase these and just have them at every office counter. And the concern is that these test kits come in groups of 10 in a box, they have vials of liquid to send them home with children, and not have them be on the bus, and nurses deal with this. I mean, from our community at the school and the nurses themselves, they did not see this as a beneficial thing. They saw this as something else that they would be responsible to do. And so, at-home kits for families to do, absolutely, you should know if you have it. At-home kits for schools to deploy again, that's the, outside of the Abbott ID, we are working to get tests back quickly. But the work entailed in all of these things, and I don't know if I'm speaking well of the details, but the nurses have the details, and they work with their community to understand what is actually possible in schools and what isn't. And when we have a capability of moving more, we do it. And again, it's been demonstrated with the masks, except for we did less, and then, you know, in the summer, and then here we do more. And I appreciate these statements, and the board wanting to get involved, but I don't know what else we can share. But there was concern about those kits, that the state has plenty of them.
Through the Board President to Member Lessons, the antigen home test kits are not the gold standard, and since ASD can provide the gold standard, the molecular-based test, that is really what we are striving to do. That way, we only have to swab the student once. If it's negative, it's negative. If it's positive, it's positive. With the home kits, if they have a negative, they have to wait 24 to 36 hours and take a second one. If it's negative, then they can return to school. If it's positive, they have to go to a lab and get a molecular-based confirmation test. So it really, all the strings that's attached with it, if we're giving them out as a school district, is, the questions that I'm asking is, who are the parents going to be calling to ask those questions to? Who's going to follow up to make sure the positives got a molecular-based test? Who's going to follow up to make sure the negatives get a second negative before they return? And then, how's that going to be reported to the state? There is an app that they can report to the state, but not every parent's going to know how to use the app. It's not going to be available to everyone widely. And again, the nurses are going to be responsible for explaining that to the parents.
I'm going to call a question. Yes, member.
Is it possible to make one additional change to the amendment I suggested?
You want to do a friendly amendment to your amendment?
Yes. Replace "purchase and deploy" to provide, so it would read, "The Board encourages the superintendent to provide additional COVID testing equipment to schools as supplies and resources become available."
So she made a friendly amendment to her amendment.
I would just like clarity that because these at-home tests are readily available, and they have been since last spring, the state has buckets of them, with the expectation that now we ask our nurses and our schools and our teachers to follow up with exactly what is going to happen. We heard from the community of teachers already, and again, it's just another thing that we have to think through about what more can we ask? And there's a concern already that we do too much in schools, and because our employees are giving and good people, they will always show up at the table and take those calls and do it. And if we thought it was doable and would add value and give us more information than we have now, and not more work, we would have already done it last year. I'm sharing that I want to understand that when you want, make them available, as, you know, when they're available, they're already available. If I could hire an extra person at school, I would do it to handle all testing. We've tried. Please define what you would like, because these are already available, and we're choosing not to do them at this time, because our schools can't do one more thing.
Going to call for the question. We've only voted on two. Everybody vote? We're going to see. Okay. All right, that is one yea, six nays, that the amendment to amendment number two fails. Now we're voting on amendment number two. When Katie's ready. Amendment number two, under pertinent facts, the Board encourages the superintendent to purchase and deploy additional COVID testing equipment in schools. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Oh, I see. And that, three yays, four nays, that amendment fails. Are there any other amendments? Yes, Member Donnelly.
Yeah, I would move that under pertinent facts, page two, paragraph three, the language be deleted. It reads, "The Board acknowledges that students under 12 years of age are currently, are not currently eligible to be vaccinated."
You want to delete that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, or hearing no second, sorry. That motion fails.
Madam President, since that motion failed, I have one final amendment. I just handed it to you guys, I'm sorry. I ran through the secretary. Madam President, as long as we're going to be identifying random facts in this memorandum, I would move that under pertinent facts, page two, paragraph three, we add that the Board acknowledges that the use of the vaccine for children's ages 13 to 15 is under an emergency use authorization of the CDC and is not FDA-approved.
Is there a second to Mr. Donnelly's motion? Hearing none? That motion fails. So now, we vote on the main motion. I call the question. Ms. Ellie? We're voting on whether to accept memo number 31. Yes, the main motion now. I know, it was a little confusing there for a minute, but you see how it goes? All right. Ellie, did she vote already? And that passes six yays, one nay. Thank you. And now we're moving on. We have no, oh, we have, we have one person for public, under, we have no non-action items, but we have one person under non-agenda for public testimony, and that is Elizabeth McGee. Yeah, I don't know who that is either. Elizabeth, star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Sorry about the last time. I got dropped.
That's okay. You may begin.
Okay, greetings, School Board members, Dr. Bishop, and community stakeholders. My name is Elizabeth Congdon McGee, and I am coming to you as a graduate of the Anchorage School District, have worked in the Anchorage School District for 20 years, and a veteran professional school counselor. Tonight, I want to come to you with concerns on how our elementary school counselors are being utilized in some, in some of our schools. It is important to understand that many of our elementary school counselors may not have a classroom assignment, but they do have two schools, teach 29 to 45 social-emotional learning classes, and 300 to 900 kids on their case load. Professional school counselors are meant to provide tier-one, universal services to all students. It is our elementary school counselors, if our elementary school counselors are pulled to sub, then they are taken away from being available for all students. Our young people are dealing with a lot of trauma, and youth mental health is high in our schools right now. My question for you to ponder is, are you going to pull the school counselor from the class they are subbing in when there is a crisis? If a student needs to talk to with the school counselor, are you going to pull the school counselor from the class they are subbing in? Having a sub in a classroom is already disruptive, but having to pull Having a sub in a classroom is already disruptive, but having to pull a school counselor for a situation, or not having a school counselor available for students, is also very disruptive. I know that we are very short on subs in our school district. I believe that if there is no one else to be pulled from, then pull the school counselors in. My, my other concern, or my other question, is why are some school counselors being compensated for subbing and others are not? Our district values equity. I believe that is not only, that not only goes with diversity, we also need to look at it as how we treat our employees. In closing, I had the opportunity to speak to 50-plus school board members from our state, from around our state, on our role as an educator in our school, and how to utilize us as a frontline worker dealing with much of our youth mental health that is coming into our schools every day. There is a waiting list for more intensive services for some of our high-need students. Our school counselors need to be available to support students, staff, and families. They should be the last to be pulled for substitutes in a classroom. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Now, I see a phone number in the queue, I don't see a name with it. Okay, all right, so we will continue on. That brings us to item J, Board, School Board and Administration comments. Let's start to my left today. Member Higgins, comments?
Thank you.
Feel free to pass. No, I'm joking.
Is that working? Too loud, huh? I apologize. One of the things we don't do whenever we have all these testimonies coming up is giving a chance to provide feedback then. And that's somewhat unfortunate because they're really making a lot of important comments, and I'll try to recognize some of those comments and try to give some response. One of the ones that most impacted me is listening to the racism issues and the discrimination concerns. We've had studies in the past that have identified problems in the school district. They've identified that they don't think some kids can learn, and they use that in bad ways. That was back 20 years ago. So some of these things have been ongoing issues as far as locations. I think there's been some efforts here, but I think somewhere along this line, it needs to be surfaced higher, and I think it needs to come forward. These are things that can't be tolerated, and we just need to address them. I don't hear the individual issues, but I'm hearing the information coming in, and it's moving to me, and it's a very important issue. I know that the affirmative action programs of having the diversity out there in the school districts, it's a very important issue. When you start doing that type of examining, you look at how many applicants you're receiving, and how many are being screened in, and how many are being selected, and the various steps, and that's, that I think has got to be the big emphasis of the school district going forward, and I appreciate some of the comments made in that. I want to comment on the SRO issue, the, the police officers in our schools have been beneficial, but I think a little bit of history there will be kind of good because the police officers in the schools are not assigned to stay in the schools, they're located in the schools, and then responding to the community. So we're a resource location for them. It's beneficial to us, but it's beneficial to them. And so they're not in the school at all times. But when we've had problems, and we had a big problem at South High School about 10 years ago, it was a very serious issue to the public where threats were being made, and the workplace violence, people that came up, and the articles in the newspapers have all said the same thing. Police officers can respond to the issues, but really what pays off is the counselors' identification of the kids at risk, and that's more important to put your resources in that area than anything else. If you've got to identify the problem and not just have the resources respond to that problem. So it is disappointing to think that we would be paying for the police officers going around in the community, impacting our budget within the school district, rather than spending it on classrooms and teachers and counselors that are critical within that. So it's going to be an issue I'm sure that will be discussed in here in the budget process. But like I said, those, those police officers are not assigned to stay in the school, they're responding within the community, going all over the place. And there's some benefits to the school, relationships between police and students have improved as a result. That's one of the things I've heard from others. But counselors is the biggest, you know, identification of kids at risk has been the most important factor, the studies show, from everything I've read and everything we've had people come up here for. So I appreciate those comments as well, because I think that's an important issue. I think the one that touches me the most is, we had some very good emotional heartfelt comments from teachers in regards to the challenges they're facing and the like, and what was most disappointing is, so many teachers feel like they aren't being appreciated. That bothers me a lot, because what they're doing is critical for every student, and I know that when morale is impacted, that impacts results, and that impacts kids, and that impacts their future. And somewhere along this line, you know, I'm sure I speak for the board, we have a lot of appreciation for what the teachers do. I listen to the issues, I appreciate that, I'll be processing some of this information. But I have a tremendous appreciation and respect for the, what the teachers are doing today, and all the staff, because everybody contributes to the bottom line of the success or within the school, and we have to do a better job, but we do that by working together and not working against each other, and that's critical. So I really appreciate that. And the last comment is masking. You know, Alaska, we started off with the vaccines really good in this country. We started off, and now we're way down the list. And even both sides have looked at this from the medical, from other issues, even some have been pushed even from the governor now, from the, on the right, from the left, and you name it. It makes a big difference. If you want the schools to really be safer, if you want the businesses to be open, if you want to be open for business, it just makes sense that we've got to drive these numbers down. The hospitals, we shouldn't be choosing who lives and who doesn't, simply because we've got people that are being critically ill because they didn't take the vaccine, and they're passing it on to others, and we're doing it. I hope somewhere along this line, it's not just a right to do it, you can do it, not do it, it's really just contributing to the health of everybody. This is, I do that somewhere along this lines, I can't treat these people in the hospital, I can't treat others, when we can do some things to control that. I, it bothers me a lot. I see people, and I know some that have paid a price for this, and it includes not being in the hospital, that has paid a big price, and I just hope that somewhere along here, we get past this discussion and just say, we are in a crisis, we do have a big problem in this country, we've got to protect everybody in the community, not just ourselves, and do everything we can to do that. And I hope that we can get away from the rhetoric and the, all the challenges with it, and just simply say, I'm wearing a mask right now to protect you, because it doesn't protect me from you. That's what we're doing right now, and I think we need to do that more. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Holloman?
Yes, I'd kind of go on to the very end of that and say that unfortunately, it's a very limited protection, and, and we all, I think all of us think about it a lot, get that. Yeah, if you touch your mask, if you take a drink of water, if you do different things, it diminishes some of the protection, but doesn't go away completely. There's still some level there. People talk about the amount of bacteria and viral load that's on the mask, but then they say it doesn't do any good. It seems almost self-contradictory. That's, we want it on the mask, we want it to be collected there. That means it's not out in the atmosphere, it's not on a surface, and that's, that's been the goal of that. I do want to say also, for folks that are looking at other districts and their quote "success rate," we're not hearing a lot about some of their school closures, or classes are going along pretty good. Their dashboards often list their absentee rate, and if you look at some of their absentee rates, they're astronomical. There are high schools out in the valley that have a 25% absentee rate. They're not reporting a lot of COVID. So maybe everybody's just staying home. I have a funny feeling that people are pretty sick. The class is in session, but if only three-quarters of the students are present, you're not really running your class like you should. So I, I think the numbers are very tough. To get a clear picture of who's doing better, we might have a couple more classroom closures, and we might have some issues, but our attendance rates are much better. Attendance rates for staff, attendance rates for students, and when you put all that together, I look at it, and it appears to me that ASD is doing a better job of actually having students in the classroom and teachers in, in the classroom, teaching them with the policy we've got right now. That drives a lot of my feeling about the fact that we should support that policy. I do appreciate that the board stayed away from mandating some things that we possibly don't have staff to do. What I'm hearing from my friends that are still in the classroom, they're feeling that same pinch. And ultimately, teachers recognize that when schools come up with great new programs or things that can be done, and they get passed to teachers, they basically are grabbing evening hours and weekends. If you ask a teacher to do something during planning time, that means, that means more papers go home on Friday night, or Monday night, or Tuesday night, or Wednesday night. That becomes an invisible grab, but it's there, and, and it wears out your workforce a little more. And I think we all understand at right the moment, the workforce is really worn out. I want us to have a high expectations, but right now, I honestly believe that if we have teachers that are getting kids into the classroom, making them feel acclimated, welcome, enthused about being there, happy to be around, I don't want to sound like I want to give people a pass, but I'm happy with that right now. It prepares us to accelerate and do the learning that we want kids to do. I think the suggestions for more outdoor time, some more unstructured time, the things that let teachers catch their breath, the things that let kids have a good time and enjoy things, and want to come back the next day. Right now, I think those things really matter a whole lot, and I hope principals and the administrative staff will look at making sure they don't infringe on that as we go forward with the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
So I, I did want to comment because I had made it in amendment to the amendment, and I did not support it, but I did not support my own amendment, because I did hear loud and clear that, from the staff, that staff is really overwhelmed right now, and they're working extremely hard, and in this challenging time, and I have heard that over and over again, visiting the schools and talking to staff, and I did not want to add that, that additional pebble that's, that's really going to cause the landslide, so to speak, but I really do appreciate the work that's being done by our educators, by all of our staff, and so I just wanted to reiterate that. I also wanted to recognize, in just one example, I want to recognize our community partners that are really, that continue to partner with our schools. One example of that is Ed Chester Valley United Way sponsored an artist residence for the students of a Latin dance group to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. So there are many examples of that throughout the district, where our community partners continue to step in and step up to provide positive experiences for our students. So I wanted to share my appreciation to all those community partners and school business partners as well. And another example of that is, several of the schools I have visited, had, recently have had Volunteers of America staff step into their schools to help with the behavioral needs, and I'm super excited that those schools are going to have that additional assistance and that additional resource, and I look forward to hearing more about what that program in our district does and is able to help with.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Ms. Ellie, you got any final comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to like slightly mention that I had the opportunity to attend a meeting of the Council of the Great City School last Thursday, and it actually went like really well. I thought it was going to be this big Zoom meeting with like 50 other people, but there's actually just seven of us, and it was all like student-led, mostly made up of juniors and seniors in high school. It was just really interesting to see the, how different districts do everything. You know, there was a district, a girl from a district from Miami, who theirs is the fourth biggest nation, biggest district in the nation. I was like, oh, well, we're 97th. Just seeing it and like comparing the differences and what, you know, what's a bigger than in their district than it is in ours, and like what they focus on mainly, and how they're, how involved their students are, you know, as they were mentioning their SROs of how like some students do like them, some students don't, you know, so it's really just a difference. I just thought it was really interesting to see, like, that everything doesn't run exactly like we do, like it's not all the same, and how split up it is between different states. I just thought that was really interesting, and I actually really enjoyed it.
Good, thank you for sharing. Right, Madam President, what you got?
Madam President, I just want to give my thanks again to the employees of ASD and our parents and our kids for having school. It is difficult, but every day is a gift in a school. Thank you, I've spoken enough.
All right, thank you. Member Lessons?
All right, thank you. I got a few sticky notes. I echo a lot of what we've heard tonight. It's really, to me, it's incredibly important that our teachers have the opportunity to meet their students' needs right now, this year more than ever. I hope that they feel that they can work in a climate where they are supported and will succeed in our collective mission of educating our students. It's really important that ASD is able to do what we can to address the pupil-teacher ratio issues, but that's, I think, a long-term problem that's going to require funding, and I hope it's on everybody's radar that ASD is facing a long-term fiscal cliff, so that doesn't look pretty in the long run, so I just wanted to put that out there. I wanted to also move forward from Member Holloman's comment about the absentee rate. I remain very interested in understanding what ASD absenteeism looks like. We do have a data dashboard which shows 90% attendance rates, and that's a magical number because it's something that is considered a marker of chronic absenteeism. If you miss a certain amount of school, you're chronically absent, and that can have a whole sequence of negative effects. It's my understanding that this school year thus far, about 37.9% of our students qualify as chronically absent, so I do think that COVID could be having a significant impact on our students' ability to attend in-person school. And so for that reason alone, I think that masking right now is, and our suite of mitigation efforts is incredibly important. I remain curious about any effects that the change in quarantine policy may have had on the absentee rate. You know, it's my understanding that would bring more students back into school. And I also am interested in maybe more deeply understanding how that, yeah, everything's complicated, how that change in quarantine policy might be changing ASD's testing positivity rates. Again, I understand that your decisions are complicated and heavy. Finally, I just wanted to say I'm interested in supporting our families too, you know, for the 2,000 or so ASD virtual families, if I read your.
Students.
I mean, students, not families, students. So 50% of what we had last year, so we have a lot of ASD virtual students right now. They deserve our support and attention, and as we move forward, you know, I appreciate, I learned yesterday that DHSS Health, the Department of Health, they have a new dashboard, and you can look and see what vaccination rates among our youth look like. So among youth who have been voluntarily vaccinated, ages 12 to 18, that's 55, almost 55% of the children in that demographic in Anchorage have been vaccinated. And so it may be reasonable to presume that there is a similar sizable group of parents who care deeply about having their children who are under 12 vaccinated as soon as possible, and so I just, I want to create a safe space for everybody to learn, to grow, to thrive. And I thank the staff for their efforts in that respect. I'll stop there, thanks.
Thank you. Member Donnelly?
So I want to thank the. So I want to thank the members for allowing the debate tonight upon the COVID mitigation policy. I think it's really useful for the public to hear that debate on these issues. And also, I think it could be helpful to the superintendent because it provided her a lot of the board's thinking about these issues to help her guide her decision-making going into the future. And, you know, when Member Holloman and I were first elected, the school board meetings, just like the assembly meetings, were on the municipal channel. At some point in time, the decision was made to take us off the municipal channel. But unless Member Holloman remembers something, I don't, it never came before the board for a vote to do that. It just was something the president at the time negotiated and did. I think it's a serious mistake. I spoke against it at that time. I continue to think that, just like the assembly and many other government bodies, it would be much more available to the public to see what's going on with the school board if we were on the municipal channel. So I don't, I really don't understand what the issue is or why we're not at this point. And if I could ask the president, could, could somebody write something that explains why we're not on the municipal channel? I've never seen anything in writing that explains why that decision was made and how we ended up to where we are today, and what it would take to get us back on the municipal channel, just like the assembly.
Okay, thank you. I will put that on my list. Member Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick reminders. We, the board, accomplish as much of our work as we know outside of our meetings, but to those of the members of the public who tune in, our subcommittees are meeting later this month, the 20th, on 3:30. And 4:30, our Communications and Governance Committee meets, and Finance meets the 27th at noon, I believe. And so those are also available to be watched online. And I think we'll find that we'll be addressing many of the issues that we've heard in public testimony at least some of those meetings. So thank you and have a good night.
And with that, anything from staff in the gallery? Nothing from the gallery? All right, well, I'd just like to say how much we appreciate all of our, the work that all of our teachers are doing. We sometimes forget that they're, yes, they're teaching our kids, but they have their own kids and families. And so they are juggling not just us and work, but their own babies and their own homes and kids' classes. So we have, it's deep. And so with that, I just want to say hug a teacher. Well, maybe give an elbow. Don't hug, just elbow. And I appreciate the staff as well. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
We are out of here. Thank you, guys.